With a prayer by Ms. Lillian Vandergriff, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, you are our Creator, Sustainer, Redeemer, and Friend. You are high and above all things. Thank you for this day and the opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of our county's students in the earlier meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to live in this great nation and community. As we head into the regular agenda, thank you for each of these commissioners. We ask that you be with them and that your Holy Spirit would lead and guide them in the highest ideals of our nation. Please give them clarity and discernment. Keep everyone's hearts and minds focused on things that uplift and better our county and its people. Continue to bless everyone in this room, honor the work of these commissioners, and bless this county. In Jesus' precious and holy name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the appearance of citizens. Anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not, is on or off the agenda, correct? Is that based on the new rules? If you'd like to speak on any item, this is the time to do so. Come up to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes. Oh, and yeah, we've got Kayla Burris, the current Director of ASAP, wants to introduce the incoming Director real quick, but we'll still have time for an appearance. Go ahead.
Kayla Simon, 5000 Western Avenue. As y'all know, I'm the Executive Director for ASAP of Anderson. And as some of you know, my husband graduated medical school this weekend, so we are, he matched outside of Philly, so we, I am moving in two weeks. So, we have a replacement for the Executive Director of ASAP of Anderson, and I will let her introduce herself. Y'all might recognize her.
Hi, I'm Shayla Wilson. Yes, there's a name change. Used to be Sanderson. Grew up here in Anderson County, went to Clinton High School, and so very excited to be back into the community that I grew up in and that really poured into me so that I can give back and serve this great county. So, thank you.
Commissioner Foster.
I just wanted to say.
Kayla, Kayla, thank you for what you did with ASAP while your time here. We hate to lose you. Shayla's gonna be great, but Kayla, congratulations on moving and good luck in Pennsylvania.
Yeah, the commissioners. Anyone else from the audience like to address commission on any item, on or off the agenda? All right, if not, we will move on to the approval and correction of agendas, starting with the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner McCamey to approve as Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move the fire commission report to the regular agenda under item 11 and make it 11-3. Is that all right?
Any other changes to the consent agenda? Commissioner Foster.
On the, you'll be the consent agenda that with the removal of the two that were taken off, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify.
Yep. All right, let's go to the board and vote on the approval of the consent agenda. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve. Second by Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Wondell.
Chairman, I just want to make sure I was doing that correctly. Obviously, pull that off before we voted on the consent agenda to put it on the regular agenda. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's fine. And the maker of the motion was okay with that also. Any other discussion on the regular agenda? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, next, we'll move to item five, the election of county commissioner applicants to fill the District 6 seat vacated by Commissioner Denenberg. We actually, we've got six applicants total. Commissioner McCamey.
I would like to nominate the six that have expressed interest.
Second by Commissioner Wondell. To nominate, to accept the six applicants' nominations.
Yes.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board of the vote. This is just to accept the nominations. Jay, do we, do we, do any, do we need to pause and open the floor to nominations or just, can we go with the six? Do we have, before we vote, do we have any nominations from the floor besides the six? And I'll, I'll go through the names. Erin Wells, Regina Guy, Carolyn Fogelman, Joel Hewitt, Ebony Capshaw, Steve Mead. Do we have any other nominations? All right, let's go to the board and vote.
Does this mean after this vote that nobody else can be nominated?
Right. Motion passes unanimously. Is Jeff outside? Do we want, do we need to go through some announcements and rules before we? Well, we've, we've got a, thought, thought you could give, you or Jay could give us some guidance on, on how this goes, and we've got, we've got six applicants we've nominated, so we need to allow them some time to introduce themselves.
In the past, we just let them speak, and then after that, we'll just take, we're gonna do roll call vote. The commissioner will tell who they're voting for. Me and Annette will tabulate it, and then we'll, whoever gets eight votes is the new commissioner.
So, we'll just take one at a time, and they'll have three minutes to introduce themselves and have questions from commissioners.
Do you want, I'm assuming you want Brian to time it as well?
Uh, yes, if he, if he could time, time their introduction, and then we'll have the regular questions and everything.
Is that good?
That's fine. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, explain the process to me a little more when we go to vote. Say, there's four of them that tie on the first time around. How's that work?
Well, those four, the, the, the last, the least vote getter rotates off after each ballot, so if there's, say somebody gets zero, they'll rotate off. It's down to five, and then we'll go through that process through how many ballots it takes.
Until we have a.
Eight votes.
Eight votes for one candidate.
Right, exactly.
I appreciate you.
We've got 15 commissioners right now, so it takes eight to get a simple majority. You have to have a simple majority.
That's correct.
Commissioner Mays.
Yeah, I had one more. Don't mind, Commissioner Mays. Before I vote, I'd like to know what's gonna be the process? We select somebody tonight. When do we plan on opening up the voting for the position? When, when, when will that happen?
The county clerk's gonna swear them in as soon as they're voted.
I think you're talking about the election.
Yes, sir.
To fill the term.
Yeah.
I've got, as far as I'm.
I, I actually missed, I emailed Mark Stevens at the election office. He said that that would, that would be on the August 2024 county general election.
So, they'll just carry the position all the way through?
Through 2024.
2024.
Well, now, I think if there's a Republican nominee or race, they will run in March and then on to August.
The May primary, county primary.
Well, it'll be March next year because the presidential race is in March for 2024.
So, what, what I'd like to do is get something to where we understand, because we're getting ready to take up a vote for this position, and I'd like for all of those six, I appreciate all six of them applying. I think it's the most we've had in a while, but, and they're all qualified, but I just want to make sure we, we understand what the next process is, and I hear different things, and I understand what you're saying, Jeff. It depends on the, a party calling a primary, so.
Exactly.
How did, Jay, how do we protect ourselves? And, and I'm not trying to eliminate nobody, but I want to have it clearly understood with these candidates out here, if they're not selected, when is the next, when could it be and when will it be the next time for them to apply and run? And, and do we need to put that in the form of a motion before we go to vote? I'm just curious.
No, sir, that's by operation of state law.
Okay.
All of them are welcome to apply, even if you're selected or not selected, welcome to run, and depending on the primary. But that, this is for the term that will expire next year in last day of August of 2024, and we'll have somebody elected at that point to fill the seat again for two years, and then they'll run again when all the commission seats come up in 2026.
So, will they actually run for office or be another appointed position?
No, they'll run for office.
Okay. I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And after whoever gets eight votes tonight, we're gonna, Brian's gonna change the name, and I'm gonna swear him in, so they're, they're going to work tonight.
Yeah, I was familiar, I was familiar with that part. I was just worried about, wondering about the future.
I understand.
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Mays.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if it spills out in the rules, but if a commissioner has a question for a candidate, what is, how much time do they have to answer for that one question, or is that something that needs to be made in the form of a motion to? I mean, the rules allow for three minutes for the introduction.
Right.
I mean, I would just be curious of what the body thinks about allowing, you know, whether it be 60 seconds to answer a commissioner's individual question, if that would be appropriate, or instead of three minutes per question, I don't know. That seems pretty lengthy.
Seems like it'd be, maybe, maybe limiting the number of questions would be easier than limiting the time on a question, maybe. I don't know, if you're wanting to make a motion.
No, I mean, I'm just curious what the body thinks, but.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, when do we begin asking questions? Is it when, after they speak their, you know, three minutes, or do we let all three, I mean, all six speak, and then after that, we ask questions? Just when do we start asking questions? That's.
It seems, before, but right after they finish their introduction, while they're up here, we just go ahead and.
While they're up here, is that what?
Then move on.
And so, while they're up here, all the commissioners can ask that person questions?
Right.
Is it one question per commissioner or just?
Well, we haven't, we haven't.
Haven't figured that out yet?
We haven't set any guidelines, so that's up to the commission if they wanna, if they wanna set any parameters before we.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's very important that, you know, we make a good decision, so we never have put a limit on how many questions or how long it took to answer. Usually, most people can answer a question in less than a minute. That, that's what's happened in the past.
That usually takes care of itself. Usually, Tim, Commissioner Isabel, right?
Put a water, yeah, let me finish. What I was getting at, once a, once a commissioner begins to, his questioning, does that commissioner keep questioning until he's finished, and then someone else comes in? So, that commissioner has the floor to ask questions to all six of candidates or maybe just one candidate? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so we just push our speak button, and that's the order that we go in?
That's our, I think.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking. I don't, it's not clear to me. Okay.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Jeff, one more, one more tie question. If there are a pair tied at like one, would two of them fall off?
That's, yeah, that's how we've done it in the past. Yeah, it's, it's usually the, yeah. Commissioner Mays.
Good question. Sorry, I think you're allowing me to speak again, but I know in the past, the body in different positions that are appointed is they pick who goes first, and then the remaining candidates go in the hallway. It, will we be following that same method tonight? And if so, the point of that would be so they don't get to hear the questions and get longer time to prepare for it. So, are we gonna shut the TVs off in the hallway? Because, I mean, if, if we aren't gonna shut the TVs off in the hallway, they might as well just stay in here.
Try, it's a public meeting, they're welcome to stay.
I agree, this is, it's just never happened that way.
We all left the room when I, when I applied, so it was one, one candidate in at a time. I don't know if that's breaking public.
Every appointment that's been here.
And that's been an issue in the past. If they consent to that process, that's fine, but otherwise, it's a public meeting, and they're welcome to attend and stay present in the room, but if they consent to that process, that's another issue.
Okay.
Any other questions before we start calling up applicants? If not, let's start with Mr. Aaron Wells. Just give us your name and, name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My daughter said in the back, said, "How do you gotta go first?" It's better than going last and being nervous the whole time, so we'll get it out of the way. Commissioners, Aaron Wells, 113 East Melbourne Road in Oak Ridge. Ladies and gentlemen, nice to see you all out here tonight. I live at 113 East Melbourne. My grandparents built that house in 1964. My wife and I purchased it almost 10 years ago to the day after my grandmother passed. My grandparents moved to Oak Ridge right behind Willbrook School in 1950. My family's been in the district ever since. I spent my whole life in District 6, was fortunate enough to join the Boys and Girls Club in 1988, and I have never left that club. So, when I say I live and breathe District 6, that's, that's my day. My store is on the edge of District 6, my club is there, my butcher's there, my home's there. I've spent the last two decades serving the community on several nonprofit and municipal boards. The Boys and Girls Club, as I mentioned, has been a daily part of that and a staple throughout, and I'd like to say it's that and Mr. Hahn specifically has helped put me in the position that I am today to stand before you. Through my time on these boards, I've come to know the workings of local government and the people within it very well, specifically the city of Oak Ridge and its workings. These life experiences, they've helped me develop a unique skill set in serving alongside individuals with differing views in a respectful and productive manner. And for any of y'all that have ever done any business in Oak Ridge, you know, there's a lot of different views and a lot of heavy opinions, so. I'm well-versed in parliamentary procedure and in local legislative governments in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. If I'm chosen to represent the district this evening, I'll come to each meeting prepared and ready to present any questions or concerns in a clear and concise manner. My top priority, and this is my absolute top, will be working with each of you in a productive and respectful way to get the maximum effort for the citizens of the county. This is not gonna be something that we're here to grandstand or make a name for ourselves. It's gonna be to get the job done and represent our people in District 6 and all of your people in your districts. I'd like to consider this a privilege to stand up here before you. Wanna thank my wife, Melissa, getting off work early to come out, my daughter Maggie, coming out, making mistake of wearing a sweater, and all my good friends that have showed up tonight to support me as well. I'm truly humbled. I ran for the seat back in 2010 at the age of 26 and lost by under 40 votes the day before I married Melissa. That'll be 13 years ago in August. Yep, so this isn't something that I just decided on willy-nilly. When the opportunity came up and I was reached out to by a few individuals, it wasn't on my radar at the time, but I think sometimes that's the way things, the way God intends things to work out, and it just, it seems like the right place, the right time, most importantly, my partner's supportive of it, and I, I thought it was time to step up and offer to serve again. So, thank you all, and any questions you have, I'd love to answer them.
Questions from commissioners. Commissioner Jaeger.
Are you familiar with the time responsibilities of, of meetings? Like, we, sometimes we have 10 o'clock meetings or 2 o'clock meetings. Are you able to make those kind of commitments?
Yes, sir, and doing my homework on this, sitting down with my friend Chad McNabb, realizing Ms. Denenberg, she served on a lot of committees. I think it's nine committees, and that's not counting the separate boards that she's on. So, sat down, did the homework, kinda got some practical input on the fact that a lot of these committees don't necessarily meet even every month, but looking over the most important committees, budget obviously being top from what I saw anyway, I will be able to serve and commit my time to those, barring anything unexpected or sick with my children. Thankfully, I own my own business. I've got seven employees, and I've got the flexibility to work my schedule around on an EB basis. And thankfully, with this, knowing that commission meetings and budget meetings typically happen on a, on the same day every month, or, you know, if we have five, assuming five days notice, seven days notice if there's a pop-up meeting, I've got the opportunity to bring staff in and cover any shifts necessary, so.
Commissioner Allen.
Appreciate that, brother. I love baseball, too. Yeah, I coached baseball with Jerika Hyder and Sheriff Joe Weaver. So, but anyway, I would like, like to ask you, as you talk with people in District 6, what is their number one concern? What have you heard them talk about as their number one concern?
And trying to keep it brief.
Yeah.
To relate that just overall, I think the majority concerns I see in District 6, mind you, we are the entire southernmost part of the county, is gonna be more municipal issues. I'd love to say we could get Gary Long out there to fix our roads, but that's gonna be on whatever city manager we hire in public works. What I'm seeing of the most important issues in our district is wanting to make sure our kids have a good education. Our parents are wanting to see the improvements, and I'll say it overall, the growth that we have in Oak Ridge, I think it represents and it helps the whole county out, but uniquely, 20 years ago, 10 years ago, even when I ran the first time, it's a whole different district. We've got so many families in from the West Coast, from up north, from the central part of the country, so the concerns that we might have seen, or I've seen over the last 38 years of my life, are changing daily, and so to me, it's not necessarily what the immediate concerns are, but it's the adaptability that we're gonna have to do to move forward and keep our district represented.
One more question for you. What is the most valuable resource in Anderson County, and why is that resource valuable? And how would you protect that resource?
I'd say the absolute most valuable resource is the Clinch River. We can't live without water, so, I mean, if we're getting, getting basic, it's our Clinch River. That river feeds every one of us in the county. Now, I could get into semantics in saying, you know, our economy, DOE and all that, but just keeping it blunt, you know, and I think that's gonna take working with the different boards and commissions, listening to folks with the city of Oak Ridge on our Quality Advisory Board, and doing what it takes to protect that waterway.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Mays.
Aaron, thank you for stepping out. Just really quick, where do you see public safety in, I mean, Sheriff EMS and our local volunteer fire department? Where do you see them as a priority?
I think it's gotta be number one. You know, it's easy to sit and, and say our schools are our top priority, and they absolutely, they're fighting neck and neck, but if our children don't have a safe way to get to school and a safe neighborhood to come home to, then the parents aren't gonna live here and take their kids here. My wife, when we talked about this originally, mentioned some things that the EMS department needs. She's now a nurse practitioner, but was in the ICU at Methodist for years and saw firsthand the lack of, of some of the, the lack of some of the equipment in certain situations that were needed necessarily, and so obviously priority one. As an Oak Ridge or District 6, we've got one of the higher crime rates because of some of our lower-income neighborhoods. Having that safety and that security of the police, not just being there to, to enforce, but also to work with the people in the neighborhoods, is critical. The task force has done great, but I want to commend Commissioner Denenberg. Over the last few years, when a lot of issues arose, she stepped up. It wasn't along party lines, it was about the neighborhoods, and I commended her for it, and I supported her for it in the last election, because she did a great job with that, so.
Commissioner Foster.
If appointed, do you plan to run to fill the full term?
Absolutely. I plan to run regardless of the appointment, sir.
Yes. Any other questions for Mr. Wells? Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all so much for consideration.
Next, we'll have Ms. Regina Guy.
I just wanna, I'm sorry, let's play loud. I just wanna thank everyone for the opportunity to be here. Unlike Erin, which I know very well, I'm not Oak Ridge native. I wasn't born here. I was born south of the river in Megs County. I came to Oak Ridge in 2000 to work for DOE, and in that time, I raised my family here. I've got two girls that graduated from Oak Ridge High School, and my son's a freshman. I work at Y-12 now, but I've went back and forth between DOE and TVA. I'm in a management position at Y-12, so we have a lot of classes, a lot of certifications on dealing how, dealing with our customers. So, I think something that I bring to it is learning how to be a good steward for the people that we're representing, and for me, that's the government. Again, I have three children. I'm a journeyman wireman. I'm a union member. My husband is a journeyman wireman, both out of 270 in Oak Ridge. Consistently volunteer work, I mean, between our ministries at church, we do some stuff for Boys Club, Ecumenical Storehouse, packing backpacks, delivering backpacks, so it's in my heart. Oak Ridge is in my heart. I love it. It's diverse, a lot of different people, people coming in from everywhere, so I think it's an amazing place to live. I think we've got a lot of good sustainability things going on, which I think is amazing. But I just wanna thank everyone. I applied. I would just wanna put my name in the hat and know that I would be here and do the best that I can.
Questions for Ms. Guy. Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. I'd like to find out from you, as you talk with people in District 6, you know, church or wherever all your activities are, what is the main concern that you hear people talking about in District 6?
I don't think District 6 is any different than anywhere else in Oak Ridge right now, and one of the biggest issues we're hearing is housing.
Housing?
Affordable housing. I mean, we're, we're struggling, and everything that's going on to sale is, is being sold over market value. A lot of people that have been born and raised in Oak Ridge can't afford to live here anymore.
Yeah.
So.
And as far as resources go, what is the most valuable resource that you feel is Anderson County's most valuable resource? What would that be?
It's our children. Our children's the future, and I, I love the fact that the school system is as good as it is. I mean, we sit in here and honor these children that made such good ACT scores, and I'm thinking, that's awesome, so to me, that's the most valuable thing.
Children are the most valuable thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Foster.
Were you planning to run for the seat also to fill the term?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Where this public safety fall at in your priorities?
I think public safety is, is ranked very high. We have an issue across Anderson County. I don't think it's in just districts. We have several areas that could be considered a problem area, but I think our law enforcement and our, you know, our fire department, I think they're doing a really good job, absolutely. Could they use more resources? Sure, they sure could. I would say it would rank very high.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Ms. Guy, could you describe some of your involvement you've had with community organizations?
Well, we, I worked, I mean, one of the first things I did in Oak Ridge when I came here was we did two Habitat Houses in the MOD, or the MDO section, and then we worked, my local union worked with the Calm House behind the hospital. We did an entire electrical upgrade on that, the Blossom Center. When Creed came to our church and asked about fixing a plug, everybody knows we do electric work, and we were like, absolutely, we'll go down and change a, a plug out for your stove, and we went in and it was in despair. There was absolutely no way that electrical system in that building was safe for children to be there, and we, we supported her cause at the daycare that would assist parents late hours, weekends, so we jumped in, and then it got really big, and so we started recruiting our contractors. Trinity, Tennessee Associated, we were getting materials, having people come and help us to get that in a good position so that she could open. But, you know, different things. I worked at Tabitha's Table for three years, the first Monday of the month. I do our stone soup at my church, which is the final Friday of the month. Ecumenical Storehouse, we're big advocates for them, so we go and load up furniture and put stuff up. Yeah, I just, we stay busy with our volunteer work.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Guy? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Next, Ms. Carolyn Fogelman.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Carolyn Fogelman, and I live at 118 Indian Lane in Oak Ridge. I'm seeking the position of county commissioner for District 6 because I have a skill set and a personality that would be beneficial to the work of the Anderson County Commission. I sent my resume to each county commissioner outlining my capabilities. As a mechanical engineer and engineering manager, retired after 36 years, I have proven leadership skills, bringing diverse people together to solve difficult problems. I'm experienced in developing initiatives and strategies to achieve long-term goals, and having taught not only engineering subjects but also art and yoga, I'm a good communicator, patient, and concise. I listen to what others have to say. In my involvement with nonprofit organizations, I encourage attention to environmental safety and health concerns that might otherwise be overlooked. I find opportunities to take advantage of underused assets to multiply returns. For example, during the pandemic, I found ways to help our senior citizens safely gather to exercise outside and on Zoom while the senior center and other facilities were closed. I love Anderson County. My father and mother moved our family here when I was three months. old, and I never left. My husband and I raised our daughter here. I have experienced the wonders of Anderson County from the production shops of Y-12 National Security Complex to the powerhouse deep inside Norris Dam. I went to Camp Tenasi as a kid, and I served on the journey, on a jury here at Anderson County Courthouse. I work every month at the Appalachian Arts Craft Center, where I talk to tourists about the unique history, culture, and attractions of our area. I've been just about everywhere in the county, except the jail. I feel called to use my skills and knowledge to support the continued growth and livability of Anderson County, my home. My vision for Anderson County is to leverage our momentum to improve the lives of our citizens by attracting business and job opportunities, enforcing codes and regulations that protect our health and environment, reducing crime and drug addiction, providing a safe infrastructure for transportation, and listening and responding to individual concerns. I want to maximize our achievements while being responsible stewards of the taxpayer funds we are entrusted with. I want to promote tourism in our beautiful and historical areas, and to ensure our clean land, water, and air are preserved. I want to serve, and if selected, I will serve the people of this county well. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Fogelman. Commissioner Allen.
Yes, thank you so much. I wanted to find out from you, once again, as you talk with people in District Six, what is their number-one concern? What do you hear people talking about on the street as you go, you know, shopping, you go to your, you know, classes? What do you hear people talking about?
Well, people are concerned about public safety. People are concerned about crime. They, a lot of new neighborhood watches are, are coming up. My neighborhood has a very good neighborhood watch program because a couple of years ago, we had, well, they call it maintaining a dwelling. We basically had a trap house next door. Our neighborhood really came together, and we worked with law enforcement. I was very impressed with how responsive law enforcement was to help us. It took a year and a half. But we finally have a neighborhood that's free of cracked pipes in the, in the yards, and, and bags of drugs along the street that kids would pick up. So I think public safety, and I'm, and an extent to look at public safety, I think especially in District Six where we have Y-12, we have a lot of concerns about evacuations, making sure that we're, we have emergency preparedness. Having worked at Y-12, I know emergency preparedness is a big concern.
Yeah. Also, once again, what is the most valuable resource of Anderson County? In your eyes, what do you think the most valuable resource?
Well, I would have to agree with Ms. Guy. It is our children. I mean, that's our future. We need to educate them. We need to protect them. We need to have all of our, the public safety in the, in place so that we can raise them well and educated. I would also throw in there, I think, I think nationally, I think Y-12 is a very important thing that we have here. It serves a very important, it serves an important role for our nation. So I, I feel like Y-12, I'd put it up there under the children.
Yeah. Were you able to sit in on any committee meetings while you were, you know, running for this office?
I did. I, I sat in on the insurance employee meeting. And I would say, I was very impressed with how much the human resources people cared about the employees. I mean, they truly wanted to provide the best insurance for the employees that they could on their, on their funding. And I was very impressed with that, having worked for 36 years and seen my insurance, seen my, the kind of insurance I was getting go up and down, you know, as the wind blows. And I also went to the budget meeting. I was very interested in the budget meeting. The things that the county is spending a whole lot of money on concerns me. I, I, I didn't, I don't have a real high-level view of the budget, but I feel like there needs to be like a big master plan where you look at what are the most important things in the county, and make sure that's where the money goes. Because a lot of taxpayers, they're not going to use a lot of these things that they're spending a whole lot of money on, but they want the ambulance there if they get hurt. I think we need to really think about those kinds of things.
Yeah. And one more question. So you are an engineer, and you have this unique way of looking at things. So you are a problem solver. How would you solve a budgetary problem? Is there any way you would approach that, you know, being, being new, approaching, solving the budgetary problem for EMS or our police officers?
Yes, I've had to solve a lot of budgetary problems in my job at Y-12. You have projects, and you have to estimate what everything's going to cost, and you don't necessarily estimate them exactly right, and things move around, and everything is a moving target. But you have to start with a plan, an overall plan. And you have to, like I said before, you have to look at what matters most, and that's where the money needs to go. What can serve the public, keep them safe. And that, that's how I would approach it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Fogelman, for applying. You already hit on it some. So would I, just again, just to stay consistent and fair with everyone, what are your, how do you prioritize our county public safety?
Well, I guess I would first, I would first want to protect life and limb, and make sure that, I know that there was a study done, and, and there's some inadequate times that takes to get some, to some places in the county. I don't think anybody in the county wants to have nicer amenities while somebody else in the county is, is not being taken care of, if they fall out of a tree, or cut themselves with a chainsaw. I think everybody in the county cares about these things. So I would put that first within public safety. I would put, you know, dealing with the crime. We have a lot of crime right near my neighborhood. And we're, I have a lot of really amazing neighbors who, we're all very vigilant, watching, watching our neighborhood. I'm also concerned about all kinds of things with, like zoning. I don't know that, when things are zoned, I don't know that they're properly looking at the environmental impact of what, and, and I know they look a lot at traffic, but there's more to look at when you start putting in industrial parks or subdivisions. There's a lot to consider about drainage, about what else is there, whether the, whether the ambulances and the fire protection and all of that is, can adequately cover the new places that are being planned. So that would be a concern, too.
Commissioner Foster.
Do you plan to run for the office also, if appointed or not appointed?
I will say yes, but I, I've never done that bef, I've never been a commissioner before. So I mean, I don't know how to promise something that I don't know exactly what it's like, but that would be my plan.
Any other questions for Ms. Fogelman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Joel Hewitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live at 301 Virginia Road. And may it please the commission, you've already received a copy of my resume in the agenda packet, so I won't try and recapitulate that here tonight. In my short statement of intent, there's a little bit of background information on my service on a city board that may be relevant, but I won't capitulate that either. Allow me instead to tell you just a quick story about an Australian shepherd named Nimbus, a constituent of yours of sorts. So I've been lucky to have worked in some interesting roles in several different states over the last decade or so. The downside of moving around so much is that, for a long time, it kept me pretty itinerant. The word hometown has not had a whole lot of valence for me for a long time. That is until I moved to Oak Ridge in 2015. So a friend of mine, who was a native, was passing through town. She gave me a call. She invited me to come over and watch the game three of the NBA Finals that year. The Warriors lost by 30 points over at a friend's house, and they let me know that they had a, a big dog. Nimbus, thankfully, took a liking to me, eye to her. And while I was sitting on the couch giving her some neck scratches, I said, just offhandedly, if you guys ever need a dog sitter, let me know. Before the words were out, they had jumped up in excitement. Their wedding reception was that weekend with all their family and friends to be in attendance. They needed a dog sitter. So 45 minutes after we met, they'd given me the key to their house. I had lifelong friends, and we've been thick as thieves ever since. People are kind and friendly everywhere. I've certainly encountered that. But the folks in Anderson County stand above. They have left a stamp of community on me for which I will be ever grateful. So to steal a quick line from the Texans, I wasn't born here, but I got here as fast as I could. As to this vacancy, if you see fit to appoint me, I will keep it the forefront of my mind that this post is just that, a temporary appointment, the main goal of which is to faithfully serve the people of District Six. You would not see me flying in with any sort of agenda, any sort of inapt or impractical proposals, but you certainly would see me taking notes from the gallery at committee meetings, maybe down at the FedEx, printing out some of the budget documents to study. That's the brand of service that I can best render to my hometown, and I'm certainly eager to do so. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Hewitt. Commissioner Yeager.
Thank you. You've moved around a bit. Are you, are you fairly certain you're here for a while?
Yes, sir. Several years ago, I had a job interview at a big town out west. Went there in good faith. Think I did pretty well. Don't know if I was going to get it. Certainly seemed optimistic. And on the flight home, had a giant pit in my stomach, didn't eat for about a day and a half. Got home the next business day, called the employer, central employer, before they could make any sort of decision through my name. There was just no way that I could move. And thankfully, they, they were very understanding and knew that, I didn't quite know that fully until I had gone for a day or two and come back. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you for coming out and putting your name in the hat. Once again, when you talk to people in District Six, you know, you're around town at the city, what do you see as the number-one concern from just the regular people that you run into in District Six?
That's really the question.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I certainly know one of the main concerns of the people in my immediate vicinity, but I've not, you know, on purpose traveled throughout the district to talk. And I think, as I had mentioned, that would be the first order of business.
Just in your immediate friends, what, what do they say?
I've found that people in the district
Yeah.
continue to have, you know, maybe slightly incorrect concern about drinking water quality. I think that some of those myths persist. Housing is one, as has been said accurately. Also, at least for those who live in multifamily dwellings, there's a concern of some landlords, and again, I'm not speaking of any place in particular, declining or lagging maintenance standards because of the, the pinch on the housing market.
Yeah. And what would be your idea of the most valuable resource in Anderson County?
Just as has been said, it's certainly the people. Children, you know, prime among them. I would say it is our people, but it's also that we want those people to remain. And we want to add to that body. And if our children do go elsewhere, we hope at some point that they may come back. When I did first move to Oak Ridge for work, one of the people I spoke with, they, they asked me on the phone, and they said, we're so sorry to ask this question. Don't answer if you don't want to. You know, Mr. Hewitt, can we ask, are, are you single? I said, yes, ma'am. And she said, oh, okay. Well, you definitely don't want to live in Oak Ridge. There's no one young there. There's no night scene, that kind of stuff.
Oh, man.
Very thankfully, I had some family friends
Yeah.
were able to show me around. I also did the tally of what that commute would be. That certainly ruled it out. But we need some of those folks to actually live in the district.
Well, you said something very interesting, because Oak Ridge is a place where people come to work, and then they leave and go out to farrigate. And so all that money that they make in Oak Ridge plants and facilities
Yes.
it goes outside of Oak Ridge.
Yes.
And so how would you keep that flow, or keep people being able to live in Oak Ridge and work in Oak Ridge and raise their families in Oak Ridge? How do you see that, how, how would you work that out to make that available for people?
It's a difficult question.
Yes.
That's why it's a good one. I, I really think just some exposure before those folks make any kind of living decision on, on the people who are active in the community. If you come in, you live out of, out of state, you may not meet anyone over the period of, of interviewing and deciding to, to accept the job other than one or two people. So it's a little bit of an informational role there. And then I think there's other things that the county and the city can do. Housing amongst one of them. There had been some environmental distress in Oak Ridge over some really beautiful trees that were cut down on Main Street, where the lofts were, the Amzie building was, and where lofts had been built. When I see those, I see, you know, just estimating here, maybe 50% of those residents no longer making that drive in, in living here because of that better housing.
Were you able to sit in on any committee meetings, and which ones, and what was your impression of those?
I was. I sat in on the budget meeting. I was immensely, immensely impressed, both for the level, both detailed and then also macro policy discussions of where the budget is going, what shortfalls may occur or may not occur. And it, it made me real pleased that by then I decided, as you say, to throw my hat in the ring.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Joel, for putting in. Where do you prioritize county public safety?
Very high, if not as high as you can go. I'm very lucky in my work to do some work that does pertain, you know, to the local county and state law enforcement level. But then harking back to the Budget Committee, Commissioner Allen, and one of Sheriff's Barker, Sheriff Barker's in the room, you know, the arguments he made in terms of the potential pay increase for the sheriff's office, extremely compelling. Number one amongst them, that it is a, I'm paraphrasing, a, a special type of employee who puts him herself in the line of fire. He already had me, though, there at the pay disparity between neighboring counties. I certainly don't know what the math would be for public service, but whenever those kind of pay disparities come up in, in the commercial world, you run those numbers pretty quickly. And you see, for every X turnover, over X time, and the amount of training and work that you may need to go back in, you may save money by bumping it up. I'm speaking generally, of course. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Foster.
Same question. Do you plan on running for the seat?
If appointed, yes, sir.
If not appointed, no.
If not appointed, I'm, I'm unsure, as Commissioner White said, you know, we'll hold that open. But if I could elaborate just a minute, and I know I'm talking a lot, I apologize. I, I think it's important, if in a role, to have the continued feeling of being up for, being up for election from the people. It's kind of that fire of accountability. You know, I mentioned some of this work I've done on a city board as a chairman, the environmental board. First, I can take no credit for that. Me and one of the person who had run for it, we had three tie votes. The last one, two people switched. We were, they were trying to, to get us along. And our wonderful vice chair, she said, all withdrawal, he'll do a great job. Because of that, over the year that followed, you know, any evening where the day was too long, and I really didn't want to do any environmental zoning code research at home, I thought, well, okay, but... I thought, "Well, okay, but I'd sure like it if they were pleased with my work and put me back in as chair." Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hewitt? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Ebony Capshaw.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ebony Capshaw. I reside at 125 Spellman Avenue in Oak Ridge, Tennessee. I am expressing my sincere interest in running for the position of County Commissioner in Anderson County. I have and motivated to serve my community and contribute to its growth and prosperity, and I believe that my skills, experiences, and passion make me a candidate, a strong candidate, for this important role. First and foremost, I am a Oak Ridge native, born and raised. I was at Oak Ridge preschool. I was a Willa Brook Bear, a Glenwood Cub, Jefferson Middle School Eagle, and an Oak Ridge Wildcat. I left for college. I went to Clark Atlanta University and returned to Anderson County to take care of my grandfather, who moved to Oak Ridge and helped build Oak Ridge at the age of sixteen from Huntsville, Alabama. So my family is deeply rooted here. I have previously offered myself to run for office. Before, I ran for State Executive Committee Woman and also ran for Anderson County Trustee. So I am here to serve. I have witnessed Anderson County's potential for advancement and development. As a resident, I understand the unique challenges and opportunities that our county faces, and I'm dedicated to work tirelessly to address them effectively. Throughout my professional career, I've acquired valuable skills that I believe are essential for the role of County Commissioner. I have a background in customer service and healthcare, which has provided me with a strong foundation in leadership, problem solving, and decision making. These skills will enable me to analyze complex issues, collaborate with fellow commissioners, and make informed and effective decisions that positively impact Anderson County and its residents. Furthermore, my involvement in various community organizations has exposed me to a wide range of local concerns. I've actively participated with the Child Advocacy Center of Anderson County, NAACP, Altrusa, and attended community meetings where I've developed a keen understanding of the needs and aspirations of our residents. By engaging with these different stakeholders, I've cultivated strong interpersonal and communication skills, allowing me to effectively advocate for the interests of the people I represent. If elected as County Commissioner, I am committed to focusing on key priorities that I believe are critical for the betterment of Anderson County, which are promoting economic growth, enhancing education and healthcare, preserving and protecting our natural resources, increasing transparency and community involvement. I believe that our county is very diverse, and I will represent District Six to the best of my ability. In conclusion, I believe that my dedication, experience, and vision for Anderson County make me a well-rounded candidate for the position of County Commissioner. I want to serve the community with integrity, empathy, and a relentless strive for innovation. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Capshaw. Commissioner Mays.
Sorry to go out of order. I know we've. My apologies about that. I have two questions, actually. First, any relation to Connie Capshaw?
Yes, sir.
Love that. One of the greatest, so everybody knows, one of the greatest people to walk the planet.
Her husband, Bill, is my second guest.
Got you. Ms. Capshaw, thank you for applying. And just what I've asked everybody else, where do you prioritize our county public safety?
Our county public safety is number one. So I used to work, I recently left Methodist and I'm working for Max Pharmacy and their long-term care solutions pharmacy. But I worked at Methodist Medical Center for thirteen years in the pharmacy department. But that also placed me all over the hospital. So sometimes I would, what you call medication reconciliation in the ER, and would be exposed to our EMTs. Sometimes they mistake me for my mother, who's a nurse and works at other facilities, to get things done. I have seen in our, not only our ER, but also being a resident, I'm a homeowner, and I live in Scarborough, and just also being in different areas of the county, just riding about, have seen that we need to prioritize our public safety. Our people are our biggest resource, and we need to do, make sure that our sheriff's department, our EMTs, that whole area of public safety, they have the necessary funds to be able to do their job. And it's to a point, you know, sometimes they're having to work, not only working EMT, working the ambulance service on the weekends, but they're also coming into the hospital, working as EMTs, trying to make the necessary funds to support their family. You know, I would run into them and say, "Well, didn't I just see you about an hour ago?" And they're like, "Yeah, well, I've switched over jobs. I'm now working in the ER." And I was like, "Well, I'll be." You know, "How can you do that? So this is what I have to do to support my family." So I believe that's a top priority.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah. You're related to Bill?
I am.
How so? Is that, how so?
So his father, William Capshaw, and my grandfather, James Capshaw, were brothers.
Well, I tell you what, I love his artwork. I have it in my home. You know, very, very unique pieces. So telling him I said hello. I want to ask you the same type of question. You're living in Scarborough and Spellman Avenue.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Scarborough. And what is, when you're talking to people around Scarborough, and that's a very, very beautiful neighborhood, too, what is their main concern? What do they talk about most in Scarborough as their main concern? One thing.
One thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Affordable housing. So we have, you know, the Oak Ridge preschool was placed in Scarborough. So a main concern that I had, I had people knocking on my doors. They knew I ate at Shoney's on Saturdays. They're coming to Shoney's. And very, the population of Scarborough, which is changing, was mostly older residents that helped build Oak Ridge, their older workers from Y-12, K-25, and ORNL. And the issues that they came to me, they were concerned about, with this preschool coming to our neighborhood, are we going to get displaced? Because that means our property value is going to go up. I'm on a fixed income. What are they going to do? You know, I'm not able to get to the meeting, but can you go? So I did represent those older residents in my neighborhood who were very concerned about being displaced. And with the increase, I mean, right up the street from me, that one house went, the property got acquired by the land bank, and then, and it was like $7,500 when I seen it on there. The price doubled. It was like $12,500. A realtor came and bought it. And then they've placed a house there that sold for $299,000. Now, most of the houses in my neighborhood were valued before that happened, anywhere from forty-five to maybe fifty thousand. But now, a lot of people are still coming to my house. I'm not at Shoney's because of COVID when that happened, but they're still finding me in the grocery store, and they're saying, "Well, now my property value has increased, and I think I'm going to get displaced out of my home. What am I going to do? Where am I going to live?"
So in your estimation, what is the most valuable resource of Anderson County?
I think the most valuable resource of Anderson County is its people. You all make this place the, an awesome environment to live in. And we want to retain our people here. A lot of things that have happened, not only in Anderson County, but in East Tennessee, is you have your youth. We go, we go to college, we get educated. We have all of these talents that can help make our county better, and we need to create definitely affordable housing to keep us here, but also jobs to retain our great community that we have.
Now, you went to Atlanta, you went to Clark College, that's where my sister went, and then you came back.
I did come back.
Why did you come back to take care of your father?
I came to take care of my grandfather. He had Alzheimer's and dementia. And I took care of him for nine years. I moved into the home that I live in now, that's my grandparents' home, and I'm still there. I'm the homeowner there at 125 Spellman. That was my reason. And once he passed away, I still stayed here in Anderson County. I could have moved back to Atlanta.
So what did you say?
Our county is just a great place to live. It's affordable. All my friends are here, all of my, I've had, you know, great job opportunities that I couldn't bypass here, and I stayed.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Foster.
I'll ask the same question, just to be consistent. Do you plan to run for the seat?
Yes, sir. I, do you want me to expound on this? Catherine Denenberg had, when I ran for trustee and State Executive Committee Woman, I replaced her as State Executive Committee Woman, but she helped me. I told her what my aspirations were, and she said, you know, "You thinking about running?" And I said, "Well, these are what I'm looking at." And she said, "I think you should do it." It's like, but I don't know how. What, where do I start? And she helped me to run for office in 2008 when I did that. And here I am, offering myself in her position to carry on the tradition of Catherine Denenberg, but also create my own legacy as well in Anderson County for the betterment of its people.
Commissioner Varen.
Yes, Ms. Capshaw. I feel I'd be negligent if I didn't ask. We've got such a problem with EMS and everything like that. A lot of times, they're tied up at hospitals. If you've got any ideas how to get the ambulances back out of the hospital once they get there, we need it.
I, well, okay, I can tell you. A lot, here's an issue that happens. So we need to look at mental health facilities. So what happens is if they have a person that's been labeled, you know, someone that's having a mental health crisis, they can't leave them at the hospital because we only have two rooms that can accommodate someone that's going through a mental health crisis. So then they're lining the hallways. I mean, if you come up to the hospital, the hallways are lined with EMS staff that can't leave their patient, and they're having to stay there. And another thing is, if they don't get transferred to a facility, which we don't have too many facilities for them to go to, they're still having to stay with that patient until they can get them placed, and it might be a week from now. They're having to come and rotate and still take care of that patient until they can get them into a mental health facility. So that's part of the hangup. We don't have anywhere for those patients to go.
Any other questions for Ms. Capshaw? Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, we have Mr. Steve Mead.
Well, good evening. My name is Steve Mead. I live at 104 Walton Lane, Oak Ridge, Tennessee. A number of you have seen me before. I'm here tonight because I was concerned that you guys might get in a situation where you weren't comfortable with any of the people that applied. I didn't know any of the people real well. Some of their resumes looked pretty good, and in that I've got to hear all of them speak, I think they're all coming from the right place. I think they are here for service. I don't know about you guys, but I didn't know that county commissioners were paid at all when I first ran for office. I've had a very interesting life. I've already kind of proven myself with twelve years in the county commission. Charlie Curtis from the Tennessee County Commission Association told me to say hello to you guys and ensured me that I could tell you that he strongly supports my being back on commission. But he also recognizes there may be other people that are well-qualified, and that's the key thing. We want to make sure we end up with someone that's well-qualified. Had an interesting life. When I was seventeen years old, graduated from high school, went in the US Navy on a three-year enlistment, and twenty-one and a half years later, I just got the heck out. Now, I think there's reasons for that. Nineteen sixty-six, when I went into the Navy, they offered me a fifteen-week school. And when I got done with basic training, they sent me to a sixty-week electronics school. And from that, I was offered the chance to go to a year-and-a-half-long training with nuclear reactors. But there was a glitch in that. In between those two schools, they made me go to Pearl Harbor, Hawaii for nine months on temporary assigned duty. That was a little treat. So I went into submarines, got crawfishes, nuclear reactor operator. About that time, I ran into this girl when I was in New London, Connecticut, named Leslie. Some of you know my wife. But we met, we were engaged a week later, and married four weeks after that. Now, we've been married fifty-four years. We have four daughters, nine great-grandkids, and four great-great-grandkids with one more on the way. So Oak Ridge has been a big deal to me. I came here in nineteen eighty-seven, and that's where I live since. I've lived here longer than any place else in my life. I worked at the, I worked at the Oak Ridge National Lab of Hyperreactor, worked at K-25 Emergency Management, and I worked in the Y-12 and production facility stuff, taking care of the nuclear weapons stockpile and its storage. I really enjoyed my time on county commission. It was a lot of work. I think some of you remember that I put a lot of time into it. I also served on the Charter Commission. I also served during the same time for eight and a half years with the Tennessee State Guard. During the last three years of that, I was promoted to Colonel and was the commander of the twenty-three Eastern Counties of Tennessee. So I've been a lifelong conservative. That's not going to change. I come with twelve years of training and experience as county commissioner from District Six, and I would certainly hope that you consider me if you think I'm the best option because I will support and defend the Constitution and the people of the state and the county.
Questions for Mr. Mead. Commissioner Allen.
Mr. Mead, how are you?
Oh, if it got any better, I'd need counseling.
Right. I'm going to ask the same type of questions here. You've been in District Six for quite some time. You know the people there. What is their major concern that you see when you're talking to people in District Six?
I think their concern for a while had been just living conditions and roads and in public safety, things like that. But now I think there's a big swing to where people are really concerned that our nation is failing, that we're actually in a situation where I think this is a real good example of constitutional government and the way it should work. Or all of you, I think, are just all really supporting the people in your district and the county, and you really believe in the Constitution of the state of Tennessee and the United States. But we're seeing that fail, particularly in a lot of the big cities around the country. And I think it's time for us to basically rise up and help recover the constitutional system the founding fathers intended. And that's becoming what I see as one of the big concerns within the general population. Not everybody's willing to stand up, but a lot of people are worried.
So when it comes to resources, what is the most valuable resource that you see in Anderson County?
Well, to me, clearly, in Anderson County, their most valuable resource is its people. But that's, part of that was because of Oak Ridge itself. I mean, from its formation, we were gathering some of the brightest, smartest people in science from literally the world into one spot. It made Anderson County and Oak Ridge a very special place. And that continues to this day because it brought other companies and other companies and more people, brought more people. I mean, in my neighborhood, I have scientists that came from Russia, scientists that came from Czechoslovakia. I mean, there are people in my neighborhood from all over the frigging world that are some of the best in what they do in the world. And so it really, the people is the secret to Oak Ridge and to Anderson County. And that's why we need to take care of them.
Yeah. So you, the EMS, fire, and police, when you say "take care of," that's what you mean?
Well, that's part of it. Okay. The taking care of people is the schools, it's the public safety, it's the police department, it's the ambulance service, it's the firemen. There's a lot of things that come into the public safety, and those all have to be done with balance because we don't have unlimited funds. And I think this commission has done a really good job of balancing that most of the time. But when it comes to public safety, though, and some of these current, these new pay raise suggestions, I've read that, and I'm really in favor of that. I know that I'm usually not real good on spending more money, but here's the problem. I've worked in management a long time. If you had been the lowest-paid group in a specialty class in a state or in a... in a state or in an area, you end up becoming the trainer. The people that are qualified enough show up and work for you until they get well-trained. And then they move on to the counties around you or other places in the state or even other states. So it ends up, you end up actually paying more, because new people cost a lot of money to get them up to being fully trained. And the people that have the training and the experience are the ones that are really valuable to you. And guess who are the people that get hired away from you? The ones that are really good. And so I think we've got to bring our salaries up to something comparable to the state and at least this part of the state. If we don't, it's going to be actually more expensive to maintain public safety than it is now.
Commissioner Mays.
He actually answered my question. Has he answered? Commissioner Foster, do you plan to run, if appointed or not appointed, for the seat? I know you've been on this before and run.
Yeah, what I'm going to do at the end of this... It's only like 10 months, nine months before you have to start another election. Is I'm really going to be looking for somebody that I can mentor, if possible. And if that person doesn't arise, then I will run. But my real goal... I mean, I am 74 now, you know? Now, I don't plan on staying long around as long as some of the people used to sit right over here. One still sits over there. But I don't know that you're actually older than me. I think I'm younger. I think I'm older than you are. But I still have a lot of energy. And anybody that's tried to keep up with me cutting trees knows that.
Any other questions for Mr. Mead? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions or anything before we start the vote process? Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm well impressed with every candidate. District Six is very blessed with the candidates that have come forward tonight, and I wish y'all the best of luck. Thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
I'll echo what my good friend, Commissioner Isbell, said. I wish I could vote for each one of them. There's no candidate that's not qualified. So I just encourage any of the candidates, if not selected, to please look hard at running for your district the next time around. I ran for an open seat many, many years ago and got three votes. And, you know, you just... I appreciate it. To put your name out there and yourself out there means a lot. And every one of you brings something to the table, and I just want to thank you. But, Mr. Chairman, my question is, is this going to be a voice vote? Is that the intent?
Yes, and it's going to call our names.
What... Is it possible we can go to a written vote? I just feel like each one of us should vote the way we want to vote. And I sometimes worry that a voice vote kind of tends to sway, perhaps, others to vote. And I prefer, Mr. Chairman, the written vote, at least the first time around. But, Mr. Chairman, I'll certainly guide your guidance and do what you deem necessary.
Do we need a motion to do that? Would you care to make that as a motion and we'll vote?
Do we want it to be just the first round? What's my fellow commissioners think? I don't want you to feel like I'm trying to take this thing hostage.
I think it would be better to do it the same way each round, just to be consistent, probably, one way or the other.
Okay. If my fellow commissioners, Mr. Chairman, are open to it, I'd like to make a motion that each round of this voting for Commission Six open commissioner's seat be a written vote.
Written, signed, written and signed, and then it'll still be entered in the public record?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp.
I just want to make sure we will be on the record with our votes.
It'll be part of the minute, part of the public record in the minutes, who you voted for each time. Yes, Commissioner. Commissioner Isbell.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think probably the first four that I was party to and selected, and that's how we did it, is we had pieces of paper, and we wrote down our name and who we voted for. And then she called out the vote.
Okay. And it'll still be the... Elimination will still be the same. Let's go to the... Hit the motion in the second, Commissioner, and we'll go to the board and vote. And this is to move to a written ballot. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. This is just voting on the ballot process. 12 yes, 3 no. Motion passes. Okay. We're ready. Yes, we need eight votes. As many rounds as it takes. Be sure and sign... When you vote on this, be sure and sign your name, too, because then it's going to call that out.
So we put her name first, just last name? Last name?
Brian, how are we doing on signal? Are we good? Okay, okay. Yeah, well, after... Once we get a candidate with eight votes, we're going to take a quick recess, and Jeff will swear them in, and Brian will get them loaded onto the voting monitor.
Anthony Allen. Carolyn Fogelman. Jerry White, Wales. Michael Foster, Wales. Palmer, Wales. Bob Smallridge, Wales. Josh Anderson, Hewitt. Robert McCamey, Wales. Tyler Mays, Wales. Shane Vow, Wales. Tracy Waddell, Capshaw. Jaeger, Hewitt. Bochamps, Wales. Tim Isbell, Wales. Vandergriff, Wales. Commissioner Verran, Capshaw.
Is that everyone?
It's everyone.
Congratulations, Mr. Wells. Don't go anywhere. We need the county clerk to... The county clerk will swear you in. Let's take a quick five-minute recess and get entered into the system. Yeah, yeah, we'll draw it out.
We got everybody back. We're all back. Plus one. Okay, let's, next we've got item number six, departments. Tourism department. Director Stephanie Wells, is she out in the hall? Commissioner Mays.
Mr. Chairman, this is already covered, under purchasing? The contract that I think that she's-
Oh, it's under-
Yes, it's under purchasing. I think it was put on the agenda, it was supposed to be on the consent agenda, the tourism minutes were, and then the item that we need voted on is under purchasing, so we can wait.
Yeah, we have approved of that purchasing.
Yeah.
Okay, so nothing to worry about. Okay, thanks. All right. Next up, committee reports, purchasing report, Robbie Holbrook, finance director.
Okay, thank you Chairman Anderson, and congratulations Commissioner Wells, being appointed commissioner. Contracts approved by the law director, there are two, Lexis and Nexus, from the law director's office, and City Tail coin from the sheriff's office.
Motion by Commissioner Mays to approve, seconded by Commissioner Allen, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under contracts pending law director approval, they've all been approved now, there are six of them. The tourism lease is in there, I don't know if you want to pull any out, or approve as a group, but I'd be happy to.
Commissioner Yeager, approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under other business, there was one item to rebid the bus. The last starting bid was 25,000, and we didn't get any hits on that, so we're dropping the starting bid to 15,000.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Foster, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under new business, there was one item between, an MOU between the Board of Education, parents, and private duty nurses, seeking approval. This is an agreement to set responsibilities.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Foster, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And under old businesses, it was information only, but we sold five vehicles. Well, and mowers, two mowers and a V, and three vehicles, well, change that, four vehicles and one mower. Starting bids were $4,200, and we, the winning bids, we totaled 24,585, so.
Commissioner, that's cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, one thing I want to point out is, we had a 2005 Ford E350, and the starting bid was 1,500, and it sold for $11,072.50.
Sometimes if the starting bid's lower, you get a lot more interest and start getting bidding more.
Is the starting bid the only reserve usually, or can you have a starting bid and a higher reserve?
I think the starting bid on-
That is the reserve, okay. Any other questions?
Okay, that's it for the purchasing agenda. On the budget committee agenda?
Commissioner Mays.
Mr. Chairman, if, if it pleases the commission, the last item I think under Mr. Holbrook's report is the appropriation from the school department. We've got the school board present, as well as the principal at Claxton Elementary. For the sake of just respecting their time, if we could maybe bring this to the top, and discuss this first, I would, uh-
Is that okay?
Would appreciate that.
Do we need a motion for that, or is that? You got, well, we got a motion. Any, any discussion on that? All those in favor of moving the school board item up front? Can you oppose? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, and I'm gonna let Dr. Parrott speak to this starting.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming to you tonight. I'm a little nervous tonight, I usually come up every month, but, but this is a special occasion tonight, and I think it's something that's well, we've needed this for a while, so. I've, I've made some notes, so I don't mess this up. Every student, every day, is the foundation of every decision we make. And to meet our vision and mission, every time we make a decision, we use that as a litmus test. Is it about every student, every day? And we've been talking about a new school in the Claxton community for a long time. In 2016, the annual school board retreat, the new school was placed on the five-year capital plan, and at that time, the cost was 10 to 12 million dollars. And the board gave that project a priority one, status means we need to move ahead for that. We had surveys done, we talked to parents, we talked to the community, and we had ESG help us with some things. And we found out that Claxton School had a lot of issues, from the pipe installations to just, to plumbing problems, to outdated electrical systems. And we figured out that through that, it was not a school that we could do energy upgrades on. It was just the buildings were too old. Also, there's five different buildings there that have been built over the years. Don't get me wrong, Claxton School's in pretty good shape, but we spent a lot of money just to maintain that. Even this year, we had to replace part of the roof system. Safety of the school is another big concern with staff and parents, because, as I say, there's five different buildings. Every time you go out to the gym, when you go to the cafeteria, when we go from head start down to the cafeteria, when we go to the gym, all of those things, when we move students, it allows students to be outside, and sometimes if a student slags behind and the door's locked, they'll get locked outside. So, safety is also a new concern. And we believe that a new facility would allow teachers to create a friendly and safer environment, and a healthier learning environment, and serve the community that is well deserved. As you know, the Claxton community has been overlooked for a while. The school needed to be done years ago, but just because things come up, it got put to the back burner. The school board made a commitment to the Claxton community to build this school, and in 2020, we were working with architects, Mayor Frank, Finance Department, Cumberland Securities, on a plan for a new school. And as you know, what happened in the spring, COVID hit. And so, everything came to a screeching halt. The timeline got pushed back, but there was still a need. As you know, at first, we were looking at putting the school on the same site. There's 17 and a half acres on that site. But I hope that you can agree with everyone else that it doesn't make sense to build a school there, for safety reasons, and for the value of the property. We've also been working with TVA, and I thank Mr. Wondell for that. We had a meeting with the CEO, and asked them about some land. But TVA, that's a slow process, and we're probably out five or six years. We've also been looking for land in the community, and as you know, we need a pretty good piece of property to build the school we need on it. Ms. Williams, our school board member from the community, she heard that Crossroads Christ Fellowship Church was going to be up for sale, and that we should look into it. I can tell you this, the sign went up on a Thursday, I called the person on a Friday, and we had a group that toured the school on a Monday. Because we have been looking for land, and you can't find it in that community. If you find it, they won't sell it. If they have it, you're going to be tearing down eight to 10 houses, you're going to be- It's just not, there's nowhere in that. And this site, a lot of prayer, and I think sometimes you just fall into something good. This property sits on 29.37 acres. It has a building on it that's 27,800 square feet. It was built in 2002. You have a copy of the site plan in your packet that I gave out tonight. At $150 a square foot, the building today would cost over $3 million, just to build that building. Now, that building's only a fourth of the size of what we need for a new school. But still, that's a long way, when you think about, the average cost is 300 to 350 dollars a square foot. It is a great place to build Claxton School. There's enough room to expand, and it just makes sense. The school board, and I don't know if I pushed them into it, or I got so excited about it, but when they first started looking at it, the people wanted 3.2, 5 million dollars for it. I asked the school board, can we just look at a, just talk to them and see what we can do? I want to get it under contract, because when we, we were not the first people that had even called about. They, by the time we got there on Monday, they already had two offers. And so, we knew the land was not going to last long. So, the school board entered into an agreement to purchase the property for 3 million dollars, pending county commission approval, and the survey requirements needed for the site plan, to make sure there's no problems with the building and things like that. So, last week, the people that are with that church, they voted to enter into an agreement to sell the property to Anderson County Schools for 3 million dollars. It is a, it is a, it is long overdue for that community, it's something that, we have 17 other schools in our, in our school system. They're all in great shape, we have no maintenance that needs to be done on them. If we do, we have money in our budget to do it. I'm asking for three things tonight. And, and usually, I don't, I, I come to you, when I ask for things, I come to you with a, how we're going to solve this. So, first, I'm, I'm going to, as the school board, I'm coming as they're represented, you have to know, I work for them people over there, so don't make me look bad, okay? Asking for county commission to approve the purchase of the property at 105 Fellowship Lane, Powell, Tennessee, 37849, for the purpose of building a new Claxton Elementary School, barring any problems with the land or surveys. That's number one. Number two, I'm asking the school board, I'm asking the, I am asking the county commission to approve the school department's appropriation for 3.2 million dollars to purchase the property at 105 Fellowship Lane, Powell, Tennessee, 37849, for building a new school. That will come out of the school system's fund balance. Got one more. We're also requesting that commission appropriate 3 million dollars to be placed in Fund 177 to be used for the construction of the new school, and in return, the school system will enter into an agreement to turn over the 17.75 acres of the property on the present site of Claxton School for the county to do with as they see fit. That property right now is appraised at 5.6 million dollars. Here's what we're not asking to. We're not asking for a tax increase. We're not asking for money to help pay for the payment of the school, because we have a plan for that. As you know, I've been director of schools, this is finishing up seven years. And this has been on our plate for seven years, and we've been working for it. It's not something, and I know we just brought it tonight, but it's something we've been working on for five and six years. So, here's, here's how we do this. With your help upfront, the 4 million dollars, in lieu of the present school, the 3 million dollars that we have, that we're going to pay for the land, and we're also, the board has approved to sell 12 and a half acres of the life development center that is in part of Oak Ridge. And we're looking at using 2 million more dollars of our fund balance, to where we can drop the amount to finance by 9 to 10 million dollars. So, we're going to pay cash for that. In this year's budget, we've increased the payment to debt service by 500,000 dollars. If the school is improved, we'll increase by another 500,000 dollars. That will be increasing debt service by a million dollars. In the year 2027, our rural debt elementary school fund payment will drop by 535,000 dollars. In 2031, the payment drops by another 780,000 dollars. We believe at this time, the school will cost between 21 to 23 million. That's with inflation. But it, but it will also hold 600 students, with the capability of making it another 100 students, because I am, that community, when you put that new school in there, that community's going to grow. We really and truly, we can do this, and we don't have to neglect our other schools, because you all took care of that about five years ago, when we put money every year in that 177 fund. And I, I'm from that community. I, I grew up in Edgemore Baptist Church, I got married there, I was ordained as a deacon, and I love that community, and that community deserves what every other community got. And we don't do this very often. The last school we built was over 30 years ago. It was in the Fairview Community. And I, the school board is coming tonight to ask you for those three things, and I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, I'd like to thank you and the school board, and the principals out there, Joe Williams from District One, and all the school board members, chairman. Just want all my other commissioners, fellow commissioners to know that Claxton's over 100 years old, some portions of it. Most of Claxton has always been self-sufficient. I know that the community basically put the air conditioning units on it many years ago. I'm in favor of this, but I'm, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. It sounds like you're asking for three things tonight. The one thing I see is approving 3.2 million dollars out of Fund 141 to purchase the land for Claxton Elementary, which I'm in favor of. I'm in favor of the theory of taking the school over, the old school, the property, but I, for me, I think we're kind of a little bit ahead of the game on that motion today. I'm not prepared to throw 3 million dollars in, because I don't know where it would come from. We could assume ARP funds, but I don't know that.
Robbie's got a plan.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll listen, I'll listen to his plan. But I, I just, you know, as we talked about it, the people in our community, myself, Commissioner Mays, they're gonna want to see what this potential new, new school, because I think there's a lot of misnomer out there that we're gonna just gussy up a church, and it's just gonna be a metal building with some brick around it. That's not the case. But the community needs to see what that is, and what's going to be proposed, and what a assessment looks like, a draft proposal, and all those kind of fun things. I was, you were kind enough to show me that, tentatively, and, but I, I'm prepared to support this motion to allow the school system to, to spend 3.2 million out of the 141 fund, and then I'm prepared later to take up the other items that you discussed. And then I'm prepared later to take up the other items that you discussed. Thank you.
Commissioner McCamey, was your motion for the first request for all three?
It was for all three, okay. After Robbie tells.
After Robbie, okay. Yeah, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Dr. Parrott, there's a building there now.
Yes.
Church, did you say that it was one quarter of the size that you need? So you have to expand that in some future time?
Yeah, well, it, it would be, it would be the, the back half of the building, it would, it would double the size of that. The building right now is 100 by 200. The building, the school would actually be 200 by 400.
Yes.
And yes, it would, it'd have to all be done before we ever move into it. Because you have to have, for 600 people, you have to have 80,000 square feet.
Yes, so we're looking at, how many square feet now?
20,000.
Twenty-seven?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner McCamey, you made a motion to approve all three requests.
I'm going to second it, just so we can have appropriate for discussion.
Commissioner Mays, so we can have the discussion. Commissioner Foster.
Dr. Parrott, I know you had mentioned in Budget Two that y'all would like to make the exit off of Raccoon Valley and there was two parcels that you needed. Have we, have a contract on those or any agreement?
We've got a, I've talked to a realtor and working on those. We have a couple of different, there's a couple of different options there, but yes, that is our, that is our goal, to take that. We've, I've talked with the law director about some options and things like that. We, we do believe that you would still need an entrance and an exit on the Clinton Highway. One thing would just be for the safety of trying to get, like if the fire department's across the road, you wouldn't want them to go down Raccoon Valley and come up that way. But that would be the main entrance would be off of Raccoon Valley, yes.
Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, could you restate the three requests that you are making?
Yes, I can with that. The, the first one would be to, for allow county, for county commission to approve the purchase of the property at 205 Fellowship Lane, Powell, Tennessee, for the purpose of building a new Claxton Elementary School, barring any problems with the land or survey. Number two would be for the county commission to approve the school's appropriation for 3.2 million for purchase of the property at 105 Fellowship Lane. Again, for the new school, Claxton Elementary School, barring any problems with the land or survey. Think we have to have a motion to buy this, for you all to allow us to do it before we can do the appropriation. And then number three would be, is to request the county to appropriate $3 million to be placed in Fund 177. As you know, that's your fund and that can only be used for capital projects. It would be stipulation, it's only used for the school. To be used for the construction of the new school and in return, the school system would enter into agreement to turn over the 17.75 acres of property on the present site of Claxton School to the county when the new school is complete. And, and one of the reasons for that is, there's a, I didn't, there's about a half million dollars worth of engineering fees and things like that before you ever get that school. And so what we want to do is be able, once we close on the land, to be able to get that ball rolling. We would like to be in this school in two years.
And secondly, so, and you are putting, if I heard you correctly, you are putting some school money with this?
Yes, yes, yes. And, and so our thing is to put, is to put more fund balance in there over the next two years to take care of, to offset more of that cost.
Okay, a herd of 4 million, is there?
We're, the 3 million from the county.
Three from the county.
Our 3 million, then the life development center, whatever that land brings, that is going to go in there. And then 2 million from our fund balance that will go on in there. But where we were at is, that money will come in. We may not have to use all of the fund balance right now, so that million dollars that's sitting there will grow for that.
Okay, and is this time sensitive?
Yes, yes. They have, they have other offers on it and I think it's pretty public now and there's a lot of people that will want to get a hold of it and then try to sell it back to us if something doesn't happen.
Okay.
Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott.
A, thank you for the presentation and meeting with us. Something that I had talked about over the last few weeks has been facilities in the county. And not just our school facilities, but facilities in general. And how we have some that are abysmal, some that I wouldn't walk in with a hazmat suit. But then when we talk about our schools and we've got facilities, Claxton may look aesthetically pleasing to some and say you don't need a school. But what's bubbling under the surface? When we use the words asbestos, you know, that-
There's pipes in there, it was built 100 years ago, yes.
So we've got schools that have, we haven't built a school in close to 40 years. Claxton has been overlooked a couple of times over a period of several years. Both the county and the schools have a fund balance. They are in a position now that they haven't been in quite some time. I know that Mr. Holbrook will probably answer some of the concerns. But I would ask and urge everyone on this board, because it's time to make an investment. Not just in Claxton Elementary School, not just in the community. But if we want to see change affected in our facilities and our programs and in development, it is past time that we start investing in them. No one likes to give away $3 million. I've heard that term. I don't see it as a giveaway, see it as an investment. I would say, as future conversations do come about, that property on the corner, having it in our possession, there's, there's a lot of money that could be, I can, I, I see the return of investment on that. But I would just like to say first is thank you to school board member Williams for her years of service in fighting for this. Commissioner Wondell for, since, I'm sure before '06, of advocating for a school for this community. And I think that, that this is an opportunity now that we may not ever face again. And I would just, I'm 100% for this, all three phases. But, and I would ask that my friends up here would, would support this, I think incredibly needed program and facility in Claxton.
And, and one of the things we will do is, once we get, once we get that next step, we will work with the community and we'll do design work and we'll work with you all. And, and we want to be a showplace. The other thing we really want to do is work with TBA because we want to put some STEM labs in it. We want to make it state of the art because as you said, we don't build a school but every 40 years and we want to get it right. And so we want to make sure, it's a whole lot easier, the engineer has said, it, it doesn't cost much to move a line when it's on a piece of paper. But it costs a whole lot to move it when it's blocked. And so we want to make sure we do it right. And, and I think it is the investment. I, we're, we're not asking for the, we're asking for the upfront 3 million, but I, I think in the long run, you all are going to, to get that investment plus more back from that corner piece of property.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Wondell. I would support the first phase, but I wasn't in on any of the meetings or discussions about Phase Two or Phase Three. Because I'm always analytical guy about how money is spent and it is a return on investment, we need to build it. I just can't vote for two and three tonight without more questions. And when we did the tax increase before, you know, we didn't think that we needed any more money from the county for 10 years. Of course, we did talk about the school and it's much needed. And I appreciate the school board that helped vote, voted to keep Bryceville open. That, that's big for that community. And we're going off a little bit there, but we just had the talent show and appreciation for Bryceville the other night. And it was heartwarming to see the people that turned out. And it wasn't the grandparents that was raising the kids now that you used to see years ago, it's the actual parents who's there. It was full. But thank you for that.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Thank you, Chairman. I didn't hear, what's the size of the life development?
There, it's, it's 12, it's, it's 12, I think it is, Joe, it's 12 and a half acres.
Is there estimated value on that?
It, it's, I think the value right now is 250,000, but I think, as you know where it is, it's down the old, it's, it's-
I know where it is, yes.
So it, it's a prime priest property there and I think-
And those funds would go where?
They would go into this school. They would go completely for the school, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion?
Can Robbie address some of the questions that-
Sure. So number two, you have as a budget amendment in front of you. That was the last page of the minutes. It's page 19, budget amendment number 30 for 3.2 million dollars. We prepared that.
Can I say, the reason it's 200,000, we don't know what closing cost or anything like that will be, so. And have to do, you got to drill holes in the ground to see if there's ever been anything put in there, so that's why that extra 200,000.
And also last budget meeting, or it's on this agenda too, we approved some funding for earnest money. Can't remember how much.
25,000, there's, there's 25,000 in it for earnest money, yes.
Yes, so we've, that was already approved in the budget meeting and it's coming before Commission tonight. This budget amendment, we added as, we do have Section Eight when we can add amendments that haven't gone to the committee. And we added this one. As far as the 3 million, I'm currently in discussions with Autumn on how to handle this and we talked a little bit today, but she's researching. I mean, we have a fund balance. We also have the 3 million in assigned that we've moved from fund balance to assigned. We have ARP funds still with 5 million. I mean, I think that is something that will need to come back maybe to Budget Committee for where the money comes from or how we want to handle it. Because I'm not exactly sure about that yet, but I do think it can be done. But, and also Dr. Parrott spoke to me today on the phone about a resolution between the school board, Board of Education and the county to clear up the details about the land. And that is not ready either, so that would come back. So the, the third one, I think, can wait till in June. We could discuss it in the budget meeting and Commission. But the first two, the approval of the sale and the budget amendment are ready for you tonight if, you know, that's the will of the committee or the commission.
Commissioner Wondell here.
I prefer Commissioner Allen if he'd like to go ahead. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, you know, this motion we have on the floor is for all three items, the way I understand it. And there's one item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman. That's for 3.2 million, to allow the schools to go buy the property. I'm, I'm in favor of that. I support that wholeheartedly. But to sit here and throw out, and yeah, I'll use the word throw out, $3 million without having any tangible, let me just back up. We haven't even tested the property yet to see if it's available. Is there any caves underneath? We don't know. Why assign $3 million to the purchase when we don't even know if we make the acquisition, if it's able to be transitioned to us? As far as the old school, I've just heard some talk around here about asbestos. Well, I guess as commissioners, we're willing to take on asbestos and figure out how to, you know, remedy or situation. I don't know, I'm not an engineer. But what I'd like to do is take baby steps first because being around since 2006, I've stepped my foot into things like 205 Main. And then you find yourself, you know, battling the whole way because there wasn't a real good plan to begin with. Now, this is different. They have a good plan to start with. The plan, step one, is to buy the property. Let's buy the property. Let's not worry about the $3 million yet. The 3, Robbie, is the $3 million we have in any fund balance going anywhere anytime soon?
Not unless you all approve it.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, it's there, it's safe. So we can, we can do that at the next budget meeting or the next commission meeting. But, Mr. Chairman, it bothers me that, that this isn't even on the agenda except the request to allow the purchase out of 141. So, you know, if, if the motion's going to stand the way it is to approve all three, I'm going to vote against it. Not because I'm against the school, but because I'm against putting an additional $3 million into something that I don't know if we own yet and I don't know if we will own. And I don't know what we're going to do with the 17 acres, the, the five buildings with the 17 acres. All of those are questionable. Will it be of value? Yes, but where's the plan? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCamey.
Maybe we should take them- One at a time. And my motion would be to authorize the purchase of the property. School board, go ahead and purchase the property.
Are you okay with that, Commissioner Mays? As a second, okay. Got a motion to purchase the property, to authorize the school board to purchase the property. Commissioner Foster.
The price, the purchase price is 3 million or 3.2?
3 million.
Okay, they've got a list here at 3.2, but you guys are in agreement at 3.
Commissioner Allen, did you have anything?
So there's a motion-
Pending that, we're going to do these one at a time. First, approve the purchased property for 3.0 million dollars?
3.2.
3.2. And then the second one is for the appropriation for 3.2?
Well, we'll have to make another motion for that one, but the motion-
Okay, but this was just for the purchase of the property, okay.
Any other discussion? Does everybody understand the motion currently? Commissioner Is-
And that comes straight out of the school fund, it's not-
Correct, yes. All right, let's go to the board and vote. 16 yes, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and for the appropriation, it's decreasing fund 141, 34675, committed for capital outlay, 1,436, 436,000. And 141, 34685,5, committed for capital projects, 1,764,000, for a total of 3.2 million dollars into land purchases, 141, 76100715. And you do have that budget amendment before you end the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner McCamey.
It was 30.
30?
Yes. It's past, it's the, once you get through the minutes, it's the last page behind Commissioner Bowles' letter.
Does everyone understand where that, where that is and where that's coming from?
I think that's right.
Commissioner Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, our rules committee has done a good job about, you know, making sure that we follow procedure. And, you know, I think the rest of this should go back to budget and finance for discussion. Because we're asking, you know, we're going to be making some big financial decisions here, like Commissioner Wondell said, without really seeing the plan. And just like himself, I have those memories 205 Main Street, so.
Commissioner Mays.
This appropriation is in the budget packet, correct?
It was under Group Eight, additional items not discussed during Budget Committee, yes. But it was in your packet.
Oh.
Does that change the-
It takes-
Three, three-fourths to approve?
Yes.
That, okay. Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, the first motion we just passed was to allow them to purchase. This motion is now going to allow them to take it out of the codes they wish to take it out of within their school budget, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
With their fund balance.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. This takes three-fourths approval, since it didn't come through Budget Committee. 15 yes, one no, motion passes.
And I can bring the other back to budget if that's, if that's what we're going to do.
Commissioner Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to make a motion to send it to budget or is it okay for Dr. Parrott to just bring it to budget? I'm happy to make-
I'll add it to the agenda next month.
I'll just go on record.
If you want to make that motion next spring.
Yeah, I'll go on record to bring the request for $3 million to Budget Committee, so move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wondell, second by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Just referring back to Budget Committee. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott, and I really appreciate it.
Okay, back to the regular agenda, the cash and fund balance report. Unassigned fund balance for the general fund, nine point two million. Total fund balance is fifteen million, six forty-four, nine twenty. Cash at the end of April, twenty million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight fifty-five, which is up two point four million from last year at this time. Um, the schools' cash, twenty-three million, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, and their fund balance at twelve point three million. Any questions on the fund balance report?
Commissioner Wondell.
Robbie, what, what, what do you attribute the increase in cash flow in your mind from?
Well, you know, I was thinking about that, because I figured one of y'all would ask me. And, um, you know, we've leveled off with sales tax, and honestly, our property tax collections are a little, or percentage is a little bit less, almost the same, but a little bit less than last year. And I think honestly, just being able to spending some A R P funds, and, um, I, I would think too in our budget that we've controlled spending some this year, so that, that's what I look.
And what do you have, I'm looking at the one twenty-one fund, American Rescue Plan, A R P funds.
Eleven million, one hundred.
Yeah, but that's what we have in the bank for cash.
Yes, sir.
But available, we have how much? You'll get to that next, and I always get this.
Yes, that's all right. We have five million, six hundred and seven thousand, and eighty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. That's split up two different ways, revenue loss and.
Five point six roughly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if no other questions, I'll move on to the sales tax really quickly. For the month of March, we collected three point seven million dollars in sales tax for the county of Anderson as a whole. That was up eight percent from last year. The county's portion, Anderson County, um, was down from a year ago, four hundred and fifty-four thousand in March, and twenty-two to four hundred and two thousand, six oh three this year. So, again, sales tax is kind of leveling off, but we're still collecting that, what we did last year, or a little more.
Commissioner Foster.
Uh, where do you estimate us finishing compared to our budget?
For sales tax.
For sales tax.
Right, I think what we budgeted for, right, right at it, or a little bit more possibly.
Okay.
And I have that somewhere.
Commissioner, Commissioner Isbell.
If you wanted to.
Hey Robbie, can you, uh? Not tonight, but maybe, uh, next budget meeting or operations one, uh, give us a rundown on how much, since the internet sales taxes come in, how much each department has received.
Yes, you're talking about how we break it down as far as when it comes in from the county, yes, sir.
And how much that they've received since it started.
Sure. And, um, Commissioner Foster, we have budgeted one million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand this year for sales tax.
Commissioner McCain.
Robbie, on the internet sales tax, did we ever decide, I mean, I know in a regular sales tax that the schools get a percentage, highway gets a percentage. Is the internet sales tax different, or is it just lumped in with sales tax?
It's broken down, I mean, it's by the, where it's collected, so if it's internet sales tax in Anderson County, we get that portion, Clinton City gets their portion. It's where, like, you make the purchase, if it's, your home address is in the city of Clinton, then they get that.
Okay, but when we get the funds, are they?
Well, the schools.
Are they already split up the same way as regular sales tax?
Yes.
It's not a separate tax?
It's not, it's the same way. The schools get the first half, divided up between the city schools and by ADA.
Right.
And the county's portion, Anderson County's portion is split between general fund and highway, after the school's half is taken out, so sixty, sixty-three, general fund, thirty-seven highway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on sales tax? Okay, the A R P projects, as Commissioner Wondell was asking, um, revenue loss, three point four million. Other eligibility's, one, two million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, in total, five million, six hundred and seven, oh eighty-six. We did, we do have two commitments this month in this budget agenda for A R P funds, and one is the senior center kitchen, and the other is the sheriff's department budget item for the nurse and mental health at two hundred and fifty thousand.
Commissioner Wondell.
Robbie, going back to the senior center kitchen improvements, in budget, we talked about it. I think there's a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars left of the original, one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars that was earmarked back in May of last year for the kitchen renovation. So, there's a hundred and six thousand remaining unspent.
That's correct.
And then we have another request later, and I'm sorry again to be jumping in front, but since we're talking about A R P, I wanna tie it together. That request is how much?
A hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight fifty-two.
So, we have the one thirty-five, and then this one oh six is cash available to finish that project.
Yes, sir.
And during budget, that, that was the amount that was requested, is the two combined would be needed to finish the kitchen for the senior center.
That's correct.
And what would it take, Mr. Chairman, to add some funds to that to get these walk-in coolers to, to get that completed? Because I'd like to add that if, if, if it's not in the plan, I mean, I think it was mentioned in budget, it doesn't make sense to remodel the kitchen and not have the freezers.
Should have that right here, hold on one second. That, that is not in the plan.
It is on the plan?
That's not in the plan.
Yeah.
Thirty-five thousand.
What's?
I think it was thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand.
Well, I don't know when the time is, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to, to make that adjustment to add thirty-five thousand to the number, so the, the, the walk-in coolers, freezers could be added to the kitchen remodel.
The bid cost breakdown, no, add alternative three, alternate three for the walk-in cooler freezer is ninety-four thousand, five thirty.
It's a long ways off from thirty-five thousand.
The sheet that we were given by the mayor.
What is your motion, Commissioner Wondell?
Well.
The base bid is, was two forty-nine, nine eighty, and then there's several different alternates. For alternate three, walk-in cooler freezer, it's ninety-four, five thirty.
I'll withdraw my motion until I have a better understanding. I was told it was gonna be thirty-five thousand.
I can have the mayor bring this back to budget meeting.
Yeah, probably best. I'll, I'll withdraw my motion. Brian.
Same here, Mr. Chairman, that's what I thought it was, just based on.
I may be wrong, but that's what that, that sheet that she presented says. Okay, so if no other questions about the A R P funds, we'll move into the budget amendment.
Commissioner Wondell.
Robbie, one more thing on the A R P funds. I've listened to a lot of discussion about, um, an EMS station in Claxton. And what, what I haven't heard from Director Sweet is what it would take to get an EMS station in Claxton. What I have heard is the idea of getting more money to make a truck go from eight hours to twelve hours, but to me, it doesn't help Claxton. It, it might, you know, offer more coverage for four more hours, I imagine, I guess, but I'm interested in hearing tonight, because I'm, 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 I'm willing to make a, a proposal to fund EMS station in Claxton, and I, I'd like to know what that cost is and why can't we do it? And if Director Sweet is in the house, I'd like to hear him tell us.
I think he's hiding on the back.
I don't think he's hiding, he's just getting his numbers together.
Yes, sir, uh, I know last July, we did submit something, I believe, to budget committee back then on what it would take to add a, a twenty-four hour presence in Claxton, so let me pull that up here, so. So, the cost for additional station in Claxton, for eight new staff, which would be four paramedics and four A M Ts, plus all of their benefits, you're looking at five hundred and forty thousand to six hundred thousand. For a station, looking at about three thousand, four thousand square feet, we're looking at roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand to one point two five million. If we had to buy a new ambulance, which eventually we would have to, uh, get new ambulances, new equipment, we'd have to increase what we have, because we are increasing, um, what we're required to have for, for supplies, three hundred and thirty thousand to four hundred thousand, and then some additional incidental costs, such like utilities, natural gas, um, those items, you're looking at about twenty-five to fifty thousand. So, reoccurring costs would be about five hundred and sixty-five thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand a year, would be reoccurring, um, for the staffing and incidental costs, and then the station would obviously be a one-time purchase.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you. Nathan, uh, Mr. Chairman, kind of like the schools, I don't want to fund everything, because we don't have everything figured out yet, but I'd like to make a motion to, and if it fails, we'll send it to budget. I'd like to make a motion to appropriate eight hundred thousand dollars from the A R P funds to establish an EMS station in Claxton, as requested by the people in our district who have already signed a petition to get it done. We seem to talk about it a lot, but we don't seem to ever put the, the road, whatever you want to call it. I, I'm prepared to do that tonight, and I'm prepared to use the A R P funds, which are for infrastructure and making things safer, uh, and I'd like to see that done, so the people in my district will have better coverage, uh, instead of having to wait sometimes. And, um, so that'll be my motion to allow eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be set aside for a, a new EMS station in Claxton, out of the A R P funds. I so move with my motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wondell, is that your second? Commissioner Varan, uh, Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't think Commissioner Mays is in the room, but we actually had discussion in operations about this, and, and maybe even locating it with a new school, uh, if, if, if that would be agreeable, or using part of that, if you remember that conversation we had. If you want to speak about that, Nathan, please.
So, you're talking about.
Conversation we had in operations last week about, we're putting adding Claxton.
Right, right, so the, obviously, that intersection of twenty-five W and Edgemore is very attractive, because it gets you easily in all kinds of directions for Claxton, Powell community, that, that encompasses that area. So, it's definitely not a bad, uh, option. If we, if we do that, then we may not, obviously would not need to move the Clinton station to South Clinton. Um, if we did still move the Clinton station to South Clinton, then we would probably want to cheat that Claxton ambulance, probably closer to the bread box, a little bit farther down Edgemore, so we get some of those other backroads that you've got bordering up with Knox County, Anderson County, that are a little bit more windy and narrow to get to. Um, so, it, it's finding, obviously, as the school had talked about, land is, is hard to come by.
Well, we just agreed to buy twenty-nine point three seven acres right there, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I definitely don't need twenty-nine point three seven acres. Nor would I ever ask for that. I think three quarters to an acre is what you'd put for a substation that would be in Claxton, housing a, an ambulance and its crew.
There's definitely a bargaining chip.
Commissioner Foster.
Uh, I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight, I'd like to go back to budget. Um, this is a lot of information, and we talked about that with the schools, asking for three million dollars, um, to purchase the building, and to know, obviously, if this was something in the budget previously with the other commissions, it's not been brought back to us to budget. Um, especially this concerns with the operational cost, the continual cost, not really that front, because I know we got the A R P funds, but, um, the six hundred thousand, I think you just mentioned for to, to man it. So, uh, that would be mine, I don't know if I need to make that a motion, or if we want to vote on this, um, but I'd like to make that, if that's kind of just whatever the will of committee or commission is.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Um, yeah, I just, I agree with, um. Commissioner Foster here, that this probably should go back to budget. This is kind of the, not the first time we heard about it, but that we've looked at it very seriously, and there is a pretty heavy personnel recurring cost to go with this, so I, I couldn't support this right now.
Commissioner McCain.
Commissioner Wondell, your motion was just to earmark?
Motion was earmark eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the A R P funds, similar to the other five or six million that's been earmarked, that's still sitting there. Uh, my challenge is gonna be to see Mr. Sweet and the mayor locate a place where we can have an EMS station. It could be at a school, it could be at a, at a vacant lot, it could be, it could be, it could be, but until we put funds to it, could be's become discussion items, and we never seem to get it done. So, I decided, Mr. McCainy, that Commissioner McCainy, that tonight, I was gonna make a motion to put some funds to it, because, you know, one thing I've heard since we passed the sheriff's budget is we didn't take care of the EMS. Well, I'm here to take care of EMS. I'm here to make a motion, and if it fails, it'll go to budget, and that's fine, but I think at least each of you fifteen commissioners will know, and Mr. Sweet will know, I'm willing to put funds in to get it done. But I, I need Mr. Sweet and the mayor to talk about, how serious are you putting one in Claxton? I mean, you can say you've done a study two years ago or a year ago, but until you actually request putting one in, it's just discussion, and it's very clear to the study that was done, Claxton needs it. And I, I don't want to be a part of any more issues in Claxton where we couldn't respond. We'll, we'll fund the people. I, I doubt we're gonna put a building in and not put the equipment or the people in it. I, I think we'll figure that out. And as a commissioner's been on here since two thousand and six, never voted for a tax increase, guess what I might do? Yeah, that's right. I might vote for a tax increase to fund that, because it protects the safety, no different than our sheriff's department. They said they needed some things, they're gonna get those things, I, I think, so. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just, you know, I, I did listen to the operations meeting. I listened to it for about thirty-five minutes. No action. Lots of discussion, no action. In fact, the thirty-five minutes went off into a myriad of other ways, but no motion to put in an EMS station in Claxton, so I'll be quiet, and I apologize, shouldn't have had two cups of coffee before this meeting started. Thank you.
Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, respect Commissioner Wondell's request, don't blame him at all for trying to, uh, improve his district in the emergency response down there. Don't, don't blame him at all. I've done the same thing for my district as well, as all of us have, I'm sure. Uh, however, uh, kind of going back to what he was saying about the study, and I apologize, Nathan, because I did look over that study, watched it on television that night, I believe it was during COVID when it was presented in a Zoom meeting, and, and it showed all the different districts, and you had a lot of good data in that, as far as call volume in each area, if you moved one station here, how it affected the other call areas. I would like for my memory to be refreshed again to see that. Commissioner Foster's point is well-taken. Ongoing costs, certainly that's gonna have to be something that, that is brought up. I, it's kind of like a jail. You build onto a jail, or you build a new jail, you've got that one-time cost that maybe you could dip and get out of the A R P funds, but then whenever you build onto a jail, you've always got to have more staff, and you gotta have more this, and you gotta have more electricity, and you gotta have more water, you gotta have more food and all that, so it, it's an ongoing cost. Uh, and, and I'll be voting no on this tonight, not because I don't think we're moving in the right direction on this, I think we are, but I do think we would, I would like to see our numbers put together, in the illustrious words of my fellow commissioner, Dr. Smallridge, I'd like to see it written down. So, uh, if, if you could bring that up, uh, and certainly bring it back, and I don't even know if it'd have to be before the new fiscal budget, uh, something that we do. I know we've been putting off for a while, but if we could really get that hammer down and get it presented to the budget committee, and start having some hardcore discussions on that, I think it is time that we do move on that, but I wouldn't be able to vote for it tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wells, you have the floor.
Very briefly, so assuming, obviously, if it went more southerly down Edgemore Road, um, towards that bread box you speak, would this have the ability to help impact the services to the Mountain Lake Drive and the ever-expanding Edgemore Drive portion of Oak Ridge as well?
Yeah, so, uh, with the ambulance operations, we're not broken down by zones, although we do have a station and home base, um, closest truck gets the call.
Commissioner McCain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak again, but I think Commissioner Wondell answered my question. This was to earmark the money.
earmark the money. And that's all we're asking for tonight, is just to earmark up to eight hundred and fifty thousand. And, you know, should the, I mean, this gives them something, some incentive to go ahead and start planning and looking and trying to find land or whatever. We can always come back and unearmark it if we need to, but I, you know, I'm in favor of earmarking that money tonight, but, you know, it gives Nathan and his crew incentive to get on the ball and get something that they can present to us, because all we're doing is just setting aside some money and making sure that it's going to be their win and if we need it.
Commissioner Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, this would require two-thirds vote.
Wouldn't it?
Robbie, I think.
Three-fourths.
Three-fourths.
Three-fourths, yeah.
Twelve. Need twelve votes to pass. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote then. This is a motion to earmark eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARP funds for a possible EMS station in Claxton. Ten yes, five no, motion fails. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to have Director Sweet come to the next budget committee with the numbers for the plans to have an EMS station in Claxton.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Val. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote, referring this to Budget Committee. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. So to the budget amendments, group two appropriations from the school department, there are two of them, one for twelve thousand and one for four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under group three transfers from the school department, there are two of those also for fifteen thousand, seven thirty-five, eleven from payroll, and four thousand dollars for coordinated school health for payroll also.
Motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under group four appropriations, the first seven, I'm going to pull out twenty-four separately, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-six, and twenty-nine, which is the senior center kitchen that, from ARP funds for one hundred and thirty-five, eight fifty-two, seeking approval as a group. I can pull any of those out you'd like, and answer any questions.
Motion to approve as a group. Commissioner Allen. Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Commissioner Yeager.
Can you hold off for a second? That was a bunch of them all together. I would like to, give me thirty seconds.
Okay. Give me thirty seconds.
Lower the numbers, you pulled twenty-four out?
I just pulled twenty-four out, nineteen through twenty-three, twenty-six, which is from county commission, and twenty-nine, the senior center project. Two are from the property assessor for audit and attorney fees, two are from EMS that are both revenue transfers, that they receive the revenue already, and one's from the highway department for fifty thousand dollars.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, twenty-four, the fifty-two thousand, five forty-five, twenty-four from the law director financed to pay the legal bills for Miller Legal. There was a motion made to negotiate the bill with Jay, me and the mayor. Jay has emailed me before, today before the meeting, that Mr. Miller is willing to discount at ten percent on all his work, which with the remaining bill would be a five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollar discount for a total, ending total of forty-seven, two ninety, seventy-two.
Yeah, appreciate your time. This is something that needs to be paid. I'm sorry, I don't want us to get into another lawsuit on a breach of contract. He's done everything we've asked him to do. He even came back and negotiated the walkaway for us. We need to pay this gentleman. He's discounted his bill, he didn't charge us for several things and that he could have. He's, several of the things that he's paid upfront for this county out of his own personal funds, he can't discount those, those are expenses that he's fronted to us, but we need to pay this, move on. I don't want to be in another lawsuit, especially on a breach of contract that we'll lose. But thank you for your consideration.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? To pay the amount that he's presented, yes.
The negotiated bill.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Wondell.
What was that amount again? I mean, the motion we have here is...
The amount, the total amount was fifty-two thousand, five forty-five, twenty-four. A ten percent discount is five thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents for a new total of forty-seven thousand, two ninety, seventy-two.
Two ninety-seven, seventy-two?
Forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-two cents.
Okay. Is that the motion we have on the floor for that amount? Okay, thank you.
And that should be the final bill, or will be the final bill, not should, will.
Any other discussion?
Actually, a little bit less than I'd rather have, Mr. Miller. We'll work that out tomorrow. It's going to be less than...
Then my motion is up to forty-seven, two ninety, seventy-two then.
All right, let's go to the board and vote. Twelve yes, three no, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Group five appropriations for municipal fund balance, there's one for the mayor for five hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-seven, six, ninety-six cents, and that will be refunded back to the county.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and the last two, under group six, are transfers. The first one is from the highway department, is a major line item for fifteen thousand, three hundred, and the other is from the general fund finance payroll. It's not finance, it's actually general sessions judges for eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty-seven cents. I just prepared the budget amendment, but it is for the general sessions judges.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, under miscellaneous, group seven, the first, under section A, we had a grant request from Brossville Library for extended Wi-Fi. The total grant is a thousand and ninety dollars and five cents. I just need a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under section B, the senior center kitchen renovation, that motion was already passed under a budget amendment for one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight fifty-two in ARP funds, so we've already completed that one. Under group C, the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget, I'm just going to give a brief recap of what the budget committee passed. I also sent each of you an email giving you kind of what's happened up to date. I will send you an email too, Commissioner Wells, but I'm going to go through each of the motions, but just, we're not asking, I'm not asking for approval, we bring the budget back to the commission as a whole to be approved. So under section C, the first one is the district attorney general presented a request of six thousand, five hundred for a salary increase, and that motion was approved. Second emotion was for me to approve the election commission budget, one oh one, fifty-one, five hundred, that was approved. They also received seventy thousand dollars in revenues for the election and cut his budget some, I think, twenty thousand dollars. Section three was to approve Fund One Forty-One, the general purpose schools budget, and Fund One Forty-Three, the central cafeteria plan budget, and both of those were approved by commission. Under section four, all debt service, Fund One Fifty-One, One Fifty-Two, and One Fifty-Six, the highway school debt service, One Seventy-One, general capital projects, and One Seventy-Seven, educational capital projects were approved by the budget committee. Fund One Sixteen, solid waste, was a, was the next budget we took up, and it was approved. The library fund was approved in budget committee, was approved with a cap on county funding at what was last year. They have a maintenance of effort, and we have to fund, to keep that maintenance of effort, we fund what we funded last year, and they appropriate that, or we could lose some state funding, and the budget committee approved funding at last year's cap. After several motions, there was a motion to reject the budget that did not pass, and then there was a motion to reduce the book code line item by thirty-one thousand, five thirty-one, and that motion did not pass, and then we came to an agreement to freeze county funding at five hundred and twenty-six thousand, four eighty-four, and that was the motion that passed with approval of their budget. Under number seven, the tourism fund, the motion failed where a lack of second after Commissioner Smallridge withdrew his motion. Fund One Twenty-eight is still not approved, and that will be taken up at next budget Number eight was a request from EMS, they presented three budgets, and a motion was made to eliminate a hundred thousand dollar dispatch services payment and sixty thousand for fleet services that EMS makes to the general fund budget, both of those, that passed, and to prove their option number three, which was a no increase budget at last budget meeting, that passed as well. And then the sheriff's department budgets, I saved theirs for last because I thought it would be the most discussion, and it was, but first Shane, Commissioner Val read a memo and to the record, including himself receiving a pay increase. I included that memo in tonight's minutes. Presented the proposed budgets for Fund Fifty-four, One One Oh, Sheriff's Department, Fifty-four, Two, One Oh, the jail, Fifty-four, Two, Three Oh, correctional incentive program, and One Oh One, Fifty-four, Four Ninety, the dispatch, for total increases to the budget of one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, seven thousand, oh forty-nine, mostly in pay increases, but some in other codes as well. They also, the budget committee approved two hundred and fifty thousand dollar ARP funding for a nurse position that could hopefully eliminate some costs that we were having in the medical, and with the medical bills, and we took off the ninety thousand dollar inmate medical services increase that they had, and that budget passed as well. So that's all the budgets that we have currently. What we have to do, I think compensation increases for employees will be discussed in next, I'm bringing back a five percent increase, what that looks like for each budget. We still have tourism to go, and we need to work out something as far as funding for EMS. That's what we have left to do in budget. So any questions on the budget committee?
Commissioner Isbell.
Well, it's not about the budget committee, but I got a text at eight twenty-six from the Oak Ridge where that lost ACTV coverage. Is it back on, Andy?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I thought we talked about in budget, trying to get an understanding of if the tourism building sold, where those funds would go. Did we get that answer?
We did tonight. Jay emailed a ruling this evening.
Okay, so what's, I'd like to hear about it now, because when's it going for sale? Like...
Next weekend, next summer. It's next weekend, signs up. The way it works out is all the money that's been taken out of the tourism special revenue code, One Twenty-eight, Robbie's got the breakdown, it's a hundred thousand to begin with, there's been some maintenance over the years, that money needs to be recovered in the special revenue fund. The equity or profit from the sale goes back to county commission. You guys have the unilateral authority and discretion to determine where that goes. So whatever equity or profit above what's already been put into that building from the tourism special revenue fund goes to county commission for a decision on where you want to put it. You can put it back in tourism, or you can put it in the general fund, or in fact, Gadsby says you can put it in any fund you want to.
Thank you, Jay. So when the funds, the building sells hypothetically for one point five million, because I'm an optimist.
Yes, sir.
If it sells for one point five million, that, that check, that transfer goes into the general fund? Robbie, right?
It's up to Robbie, but we'll bring it in. It can be moved around, but...
Correct.
Gadsby shows that it can be moved around. Yes, sir. I'm following.
Is that what you plan to do, Robbie? If the building sells, would it come into the general fund? Is that where we'd receive it, and then come to budget, and the budget would decide where to put it and what's to be paid back or what have you?
I mean, I would probably want to split it from the beginning into the funds that it goes into, or if that's what commission, I mean, we could bring it to commission and...
I'm, I just want to know how we plan to do it.
Jay's opinion is that we reimburse tourism for what they have in the building, land and building.
And maintenance.
And maintenance, yes. And then the remaining amount could go, like you said, to where, back to the general fund. It is a county building, so it could go in the general fund.
You're correct. It's, the deed is in the county's name. Robbie, if you look on the very back of my opinion, Robbie's pulls some old budget data, it's showing a lot of the expenses we backed a hundred thousand dollars we paid for, you can pretty well tell what's going to be put back in the special revenue code.
Thank you, appreciate it, Jay.
To really answer, Tracy, I would probably get audit's opinion, how they would like, I mean, ultimately, I answered them, so how they would want me to receipt the revenue than how we wouldn't.
Just, I guess, from your perspective, Robbie, when it sells, how will that, or will it not, impact the budget for tourism as we go down the road?
It doesn't really impact their budget. The money is receded into a revenue code, and it will roll into fund balance. It affects their fund balance. Their budget is based more off their revenues for the current year or their hotel motel tax, which is what she's based her budget on. Her fund balance is definitely going to be larger.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Smallridge.
I just want to be sure I understand, so whatever the building sold for, we would receive, but less amount of money that has been put into it for maintenance or improvements, is that, is that correct?
That's, basically, is that.
So we would not get the full amount of the sale?
No. So if it sold for six hundred and they put three hundred in it, then the county could potentially get three hundred. You know, the math of any of that. Yes.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question's not actually on the tourism, but how much money do we have in the code to buy industrial land?
Around one point one million.
Okay. And we got, what, a half a penny going in there now?
Not a half, but point zero zero five.
Point zero zero five, okay.
Ninety-eight, it's around ninety-eight thousand, a hundred thousand a year.
Okay, thank you.
We did move some money back into it when we, from the TCAT amendment that we, the mayor brought to the budget committee about moving back to the, that fund or that restricted code, so we did that a couple of budget meetings ago.
All right, thank you.
Okay, no other questions. Section D, new business, we've already approved that, was a budget minute for the school department, and we've already done group eight, we took that at the first of the meeting, and I actually have nothing else unless y'all have questions for me. All right, thank y'all, have a good night.
Thank you. I believe Dr. Parrott's gone for the evening, so we'll move on, and Mayor Frank's out.
You have operations.
Oh. We have operations. Oh, I'm sorry, we did, we keep changing the agenda around. Operations report, Chairman.
I'm with you. Okay, under the mayor's report, Mr. Mays made a motion...
Okay, under the mayor's report, Mr. Mays made a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-three dash zero five dash one zero nine zero, requesting Anderson County Information Technology Department take certain actions and create policies related to a national and state identified cybersecurity risk around use of TikTok on government equipment and systems, signed by Commissioner Jaeger. Motion passed unanimously, afford full commission for approval, and I understand the IT committee has met and took some action on this.
Do we have our IT? Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Thirteen yes, one no, one abstention. Motion passes. Had a lot.
He'll be back.
Oh, oh, he's, he stepped out, okay. He'll be back.
You want me to vote for him?
Mr. McCamey made a motion to approve special permit with the Tennessee Department Transportation for the use of state property to install and maintain landscaping related to the Veterans Bridge, Veterans Flagpole Project, signed by Commissioner Jaeger. Motion passed unanimously, afford full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Varren. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion to authorize the reassignment of space for information technology to Rooms two sixteen and two eighteen and reversion of Rooms twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-five, and twenty-four to planning and development, signed by Commissioner Jaeger. Motion passed unanimously, afford full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Allen made a motion to approve the railroad agreement project pin number one two five four five zero point zero four for miscellaneous safety improvements near Alva Springs, Tennessee, signed by Commissioner Mays. Motion passed unanimously, afford full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion to approve to confirm Anderson County intent to renew license agreement with T-Dot for sidewalks along State Route one sixteen from long mile fifteen point four three to long mile fifteen point five nine, signed by Commissioner Allen. Motion passed unanimously, afford full commission for approval.
Motion by, go ahead.
That's actually a holdover lease for the bristle sidewalk. We'll be negotiating a more permanent ten-year deal on that, so right now we're basically month to month. It's an easement, is what it amounts to, the right of way for those sidewalks we put in ten years ago.
Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Mays made a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-three dash zero five dash one zero nine one, authorizing the county mayor to seek relief on a property purchased at tax sale, signed by Commissioner Allen. Motion passed unanimously, afford full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Varren. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Mays made a motion to approve length of service award documents as written, signed by Commissioner Allen. Motion passed unanimously, afford full commission for approval.
Got a motion on it?
Yes, it's got a motion by Commissioner Allen. We have, seconded by Commissioner Isbell.
Just a couple of things on that issue. It's a great project, I'm a hundred percent behind it. I think it'll help us with some retention for volunteer fire departments that we desperately need and appreciate. The problem is that agreement states that Anderson County government is the employer. The mayor asked me to look at it. I've got some concerns about them stating that we're the employer and the volunteer is the employee. They use the Internal Revenue Code four fifty-seven, which is a deferred comp plan, as their definition. As you know, employer-employee relationship has a lot of connotations and interpretations. One of them is respond to its superior. That means the county could be responsible for the liability raising on that issue. The other thing is employment concerns, insurance concerns, and also benefits. We offer benefits to any employee. So I wrote the mayor an email today. I prefer we hold off till we get that language straightened out. I'm starting to think there may be a mistake. They may want the actual volunteer fire department to be inserted as the employer, although they do not pay their employees anything, but under section four fifty-seven, Internal Revenue Code, that could happen under a five oh one C three. So either hold off or pass it with the contingency that we get this resolved. I don't want to put us in a position that we're responsible for these volunteer fire department. As much as I appreciate them, they're volunteers, we can't take that on. That's a tremendous amount of liability, several different areas. But anyway, that's my thoughts on it. You can pass it with contingent that we worked this out, this arrangement, or you can hold off on it till next month, till I work out the details. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, if the maker of the motion would approve that, I would like to send it back to operations for next month, defer it back to that.
Commissioner McCamey.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to defer action on it until Operations Committee meets again, because I did bring up that concern during the meeting and I was assured that employer would be Anderson County, and I had some questions in as to whether or not we could employ people who were not technically employees.
You know, I think it, the plan has a lot of merit because it will definitely help out the volunteer fire departments about retention and getting people in there, because it's almost like a retirement plan. If you've got twenty years, it pays six thousand dollars a year, so that's five hundred dollars a month for in a retirement plan for somebody who's been there that long. Thank you.
Commissioner Allen.
Would you prefer me to withdraw that motion and just defer it back to operations or?
Yes, defer until our next Operations Committee meeting.
That be okay?
Sure.
Yeah, you're okay to defer that. Okay, Commissioner Varren.
Yeah, I was thinking, wasn't there a time concern with this contract? I mean, I thought there was like a five thousand dollar grant or something like that to get it started. I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't have the thing in front of me, so.
I think there was, there was some grant money available we could go for, but I don't know if the, I don't know if passing this, this month or next month was going to affect the eligibility.
I want to say that we had maybe a month or so that was close, but...
We had some. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Fire Commission Chairman, we have not discussed this item yet. We're waiting on more information, so Fire Commission hasn't really understood what, what the opportunity could be yet, so it might be prudent to hold off a little bit if we could, so we can share that information.
They should definitely go to Fire Commission. And that's the way that I thought it was supposed to be when we talked about it.
Mayor sent an email, but I didn't get it in time to put it on the agenda with the Fire Commission and go over it. We had other items, but we certainly can put it on the next agenda item, bring it up and let them look at it and understand it better.
Those are the people that's affected when they have their...
I don't think he's finding anything. You got it?
It doesn't have a date, that might be a... The one form she sent me says that it must, a dollar can be effective by July one, twenty twenty-three. I don't know if she's applying for any grant, but that's the only thing I've...
Yeah, that's what it was.
That's the only thing I've got. It won't take me, I'll have it ready for operations.
And Fire Commission.
Yeah, which Fire Commission, sir?
Oh, you're testing me.
I'll have it for Fire Commission, just leave it at that.
Uh...
It'll be June sixth.
June sixth, as Commissioner Beauchamp said, yes. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's go, go to the board and vote to defer back to operations. Motion passes.
That completes the Operations Committee report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Director of Schools is left, County Mayor's not here, so we'll move on to the Law Director report.
You won't believe this, but I really have no action items in an effort to speed things up. I do have the security report provided by Judge Spitzer here, he's here tonight if you have any questions. I would like you to review that, it's attached to my Law Director report, and also request to be spread upon the minutes tonight. Any questions to Judge Spitzer? Okay, take a look at that security report attached to my agenda items and he'll be glad to come back or schedule a Security Committee meeting. What it is, it tells the needs of that committee for courthouse security and we'll take those issues up. Do you have anything that's emergency, sir?
Not this year.
Okay.
I'm required by statute to give County Commission a report.
Hey Judge, could you go to the microphones, people at home can hear you?
Sure.
I think they can hear you anyway, but I want to be sure.
Yeah, usually voice projection's not one of my main problems. So by statute, the courthouse security committee is supposed to submit to County Commission any recommendations that we have for the year so that you can consider it in putting together your next year's budget. This particular year, we don't have any real action items for you to take up, but I wanted to give you something meaningful to consider. This is a report that we submit to the Administrative Office of the Courts in Nashville, which is the administrative arm of the Tennessee Supreme Court. It gives you a lot of just sort of background information about the status of security throughout Anderson County, so the number of the courts, how many, you know, electronic screening devices we have in place, whether the benches are armored, for instance, with bullet resistant materials, all sorts of things related to where we're at. I'm happy to say that the courthouse security meeting with the input from the mayor and the Sheriff's Department and all our other stakeholders is working really hard to deal with a lot of things on our own about, like, the screening process here for the building and the way they're randomly checking folks and all of that to try to accommodate employees and not be too burdensome to them, but also ensure safety for everyone in the courtroom, in the courthouse, for any reason. So we're just constantly trying to, to address, you know, lighting issues, security features on doors, all sorts of things we're able to handle within our committee. From year to year, we may have things to bring to you and ask for specific action, but we don't at this time. Thank you.
I need, I'm sorry, I need a motion spread this on the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Vowell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Was that, was that everything you had, Jay?
That's it.
That was it? Okay.
I see if I have any questions.
Questions? Okay, next, committee and board reports, nominating committee report, Chairman Mays.
Mr. Mays.
He was absent.
Are you back, Chair?
He passed it off to...
Thank you, Judge.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. A motion was passed to run a public notice for the county appointment for the library board opening to have applications before the June nominating committee meeting and do the interview process at the meeting. And that motion did pass.
Do you need any action on that?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Vowell, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And the second item I have is a motion was made to nominate the following commissioners to the Human Trafficking Task Force, Shelley Vandergriff, Denise Palmer, and Shane Vowell. Commissioner Isbell moved to cease nominations and nominate by acclamation. Motion passed to forward to full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
And that is all.
That's all for nominating committee? Okay, next we've got the IT committee report, Chairman Cole.
I believe I've already took action on the resolution for TikTok. Brian and his staff will take that down in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Any, any new business coming from Commissioner? Commissioner Wondell.
Yes, I had the Fire Commission under...
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't have that, yeah.
That's okay. Is you done, Jeff? Thank you. That's okay. Mr. Chairman, Anderson County Fire Commission met on May second, had a good crowd and turnout. We had a motion by Stephanie Fox, and I just shared with the Law Director and I shared with many of you, you'll have a copy of the Anderson County Fire Report. This is something that the Fire Commission wants to put out, one, to help the property assessor's office and zoning to understand. You'll see here in this first report, there's eleven structure fires and some other information for the 2023 report. This hasn't never been done before for the county, so this is something that the Fire Chiefs came up with and Commissioner Beauchamp, we kind of like it. Jay's going to look it over and share it with the property assessor's office. There's also a motion made by Ambria, Chief of Andersonville, for Fire Commission to endorse increased pay rate for positions of dispatch center. It's just a respectful request to increase it. I think that's going to be done with the Sheriff's Office anyway with the raise. Motion was seconded by Paul Daniel. Motion was passed. I'm going to read through all these and then we can just accept them all unless there's an issue. Somebody please speak up. Next item, there was a fundraiser we just had this weekend. I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Office, the sheriff. We had many people there for this fundraiser for Grayson Burge at Second Baptist. Turned out very well. Had a good turnout, raised some money for the family and I just really, it was nice to see the community come together and support and, you know, the room was full of caring, compassion, love, and that's what you like to see, so just appreciate everybody doing that. I think there's seven thousand or nine thousand, and Commissioner Vowell was there, appreciate him being there, and a couple of the chiefs, I think Chief McBroom was there as well. So thank you all for attendance and what you did there. Motion was made by Stephanie Fox to add E nine one one as a non-department member to Fire Commission. Motion was seconded and approved. Thought there is, we'd like to get E nine one one at the table if they would like to be at the table so we can help each other and grow. Next was a motion to request Fire Commission be given a seat on E nine one, one, if possible. Just want to be in attendance so they can interact and share information. I think that was the only motion. Is there any questions on any of that? Is there any questions on any of those motions? Commissioner Isbell.
Yeah. Commissioner Wondell, I really liked this report you gave. We always do this at the voluntary fire department board meetings, but we also list the EMS calls that we go on, first responder, the assist and all that. I think that'd be good for, you know, the county to know what all they do, other than just fight fires.
That was some of the discussion, but we wanted to kind of walk before we run, and, because there's a lot of information. But I think if we get to a new CAD system at some point, all of that information will be able to be combined, and we can just hit a button and...
I think, right?
Yeah, but no, it's a good point. And they have those discussions, but as commission, we don't normally get to hear all this stuff, so that's one of the reasons we started sharing it. Any other questions on the report? Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to ask, if we could, going forward, if it needs to be a motion, it might be what Commissioner Beauchamp's going to push a motion for, but I'd like to have the Fire Commission minutes just remain on the agenda. I, I don't want to have to keep asking every meeting to take them off. If there's no items, commissioners, I'll certainly be the first one to say, no report. But I'd like to see that report back on full, regular agenda.
Manette, can we do that without a motion? Okay.
Is that your motion, Commissioner Beauchamp?
To preball it in, to add it to the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, second by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Any new business, Commissioner Wondell?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to kind of follow up with the Fire Commission. We had a young man pass away this week, Mr. Gary Thornton's son, Kyle. And Brenda and Gary are very touched by all the folks that participated, City of Clinton, to Oliver Springs, Andersonville, just, of course, Claxton and many others, Bryceville, Medford, I think all of them. But it was really another great thing to see the community come together, all the way from Gamble Funeral Home, all the way to Claxton, to the, to the gardens over, Memorial Gardens there, and it was really touching to see everybody come together. And I just want to thank, put the prayers out there for the Thornton family, and if you, if you could, reach out to them and let them know you're thinking about them. Thank you.
Any new business? Any old business? We will see you in June.